Buenos dias, everyone. I'm New York State Senator Jessica Ramos, Chair of the Senate's Standing Committee on Labor. And today, we are hosting a very important hearing on the Workers' Compensation Board. All New Yorkers should be entitled to a safe workplace. Unfortunately, we know in many industries that's not always the case. We've seen a rise in the number of injured workers in various industries: warehouses, construction, transit, retail, nail salons, farm workers, and so many more. During my time as Labor Chair, I've prioritized bills to mitigate the risk of injury and mandate documentation when it does happen. We've passed the Warehouse Worker Protection Act, the Farm Laborers Fair Labor Practices Act, Construction Fatality Registry, and Language Access Expansion for the Workers' Comp System. This year, we are fighting for Temperature Extreme Mitigation Program, the Warehouse Worker Injury Reduction Act, the Retail Worker Safety Act, and the Nail Salon Minimum Standards Council. Since announcing this hearing at the beginning of the year, I've had injured workers from across the state call my office, begging for help with their cases. All of them, at their wits' end, dealing with untreated injuries and what they feel is callous disregard from the Board. They feel their rights and their dignity have been violated. A strong and accessible workers' compensation system is essential to the protection and success of our economy. Workers and employers are better off for having a transparent, functional, and accessible safety net. You have all inherited the system as it stands today, and I applaud the efforts made so far to improve transparency and increase access. But there is a lot more that needs to be done and much-needed further collaboration between the Board and the Legislature. This year, as the Chair of Labor, I have prioritized the oversight, improvement, and expansion of the Workers' Comp System. It's a shame this hearing did not take place prior to adopting the budget for this new fiscal year. I think we could have built some momentum and actually gotten a little ahead, so it's unfortunate that now we're starting behind. All of these efforts have been made with one goal in mind: to build strong safety nets for workers to fall back on. Improving the Workers' Comp System will benefit all New Yorkers, and I look forward to our work together. Today, the Chair and the ranker, right here to my right, Senator Jack Martins from Long Island, we're each going to get 10 minutes for questioning with five minutes for follow-up. And then every other member, as my colleagues arrive, will get five minutes. So, Senator Martins, I give it to you to share a few remarks with us.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate this hearing. I think, obviously, it's important that we revisit the issue of workers' compensation, the activities of the Board, where it can be improved. And hearings like this not only send a strong message to the Board and to, I guess, to the institutions in place, but also to the workers of New York, that we prioritize their safety, we prioritize a system that works for them, that allows for them, hopefully, to get better and return to the workforce, which is equally important, as Chair Ramos mentioned, to the worker, but also to the employer and, obviously, to the state. So, great priorities for us. I'm looking forward to this hearing. But first and foremost, we prioritize safety when things break down, which unfortunately they will. We prioritize the health and well-being of the worker, their return to the workforce, and their access meaningfully to proper healthcare, medical care, and treatment that allows them to return to the workforce, which is what this is about. So I'm looking forward to this hearing. Thank you for calling it, and let's go.
All right. Well, thank you, Senator Martins. We've also been joined now by Senator Robert Jackson and Senator Natalia Fernandez. Senator Jackson, do you want to say a few words before we begin? And Senator Fernandez?
Well, good morning, everyone. So, this is an important hearing in order, when you deal with workers' compensation. That means employees that may have been injured on the job, and making sure that the timeframes for addressing the actual accident and also making sure that they receive the type of funding that they need right away in order to survive in our environment. And most workers don't have a whole lot of money in order to basically wait six months or a year. They need resources right away in order to survive. And so, just listening to you, Commissioner, and your staff, knowing that this is a very important issue, and knowing that it was scheduled, I believe, once before.
Twice.
Twice. So, the time is right now. So, let's get it done. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Senator Jackson. Senator Fernandez?
Good morning. Just wanted to thank Senator Ramos for getting this hearing to happen. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. I look forward to hearing the questions and the responses, because, as we all know, we do care about worker safety and making sure that those that are hurt are healing well and compensated. So, thank you so much.
That's right. Thank you. Well, Panel A, we've been joined by the Chairwoman of the Workers' Compensation Board, Clarissa Rodriguez, and the Executive Director, Stephen Scotty, and Heather McMaster, General Counsel, who aren't testifying but are right by the Chairwoman to answer our questions following her testimony. Chairwoman, you can begin.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning, Senators. I'd like to begin by acknowledging and thanking Chair of the Labor Committee, Senator Ramos, for inviting me to testify today, and for your dedication to protecting workers, especially those in marginalized communities that are the most vulnerable to exploitation, a passion we both share, particularly on Worker Safety Week. Thank you also to the distinguished members of the committee who are joining us today and those who are not here for the tireless work that you do on behalf of New York's workforce. My name is Clarissa Rodriguez, and I have been the Chair of the New York State Workers' Compensation Board since 2017. I am joined today by my Executive Director, Steve Scotty, as Senator Ramos mentioned, and also my General Counsel, Heather McMaster, who will be assisting me in answering the more nuanced elements of your questions. As many of you know, the Board was created in 1914 from the tragedy of the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory Fire to carry out the grand bargain between employees and employers, a no-fault insurance system, in exchange for due compensation for workplace injuries and illnesses. A lot has changed over the last 110 years, but our commitment to protecting the rights of employees and employers under the laws we administer remains steadfast. To share a few highlights, in 2018, we introduced our virtual hearings, enabling injured workers and other parties to attend our hearings remotely via a computer or mobile device. When the pandemic struck, this technology allowed us to continue holding up to 1,000 hearings a day, at a time when many other court systems were forced to pause. Our hearing volume remains high. Last year, the Board held over 244,000 hearings. We've also embarked on a transformational IT modernization project, known as OnBoard, through which we're moving our historically paper-based claim systems online to create substantive efficiencies, accuracy, and transparency for others. The first phase was implemented a few years ago and has significantly helped with the delivery of medical benefits to injured workers. We've built numerous free resources to help workers. We established a partnership with the New York State Bar Association to get injured workers free attorneys in medical-only claims. We launched the Injured Workers Toolkit with important information about navigating workers' comp claims. And we've built up our in-house vocational rehabilitation services to help injured workers get back on their feet. We've hosted many educational conferences across the state, as well as an online Mayday conference for workers advocates. We hold public education webinars, educating thousands of people, and I personally conduct presentations for workers and employer groups in Spanish whenever possible. We're also currently reimagining the Workers' Compensation Navigator Program, which was an AFL program, with our friends in labor and occupational safety and health. We've managed important strides in language access, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and employee engagement, all areas of particular importance to me. We've launched several initiatives to ensure our staff feel a greater sense of belonging. And I've hired our first full-time language access coordinator and our first Chief Diversity Officer. They've already made a significant impact in both our internal and external operations, and we're just getting started. But perhaps one of our greatest accomplishments is the work we've done to rebuild trust and maintain relationships with important stakeholders, particularly in the last two years. Doing so has been integral to gaining a comprehensive understanding of the issues facing workers, employers, and medical providers firsthand, and in allowing us to truly place the interests of the public we serve first: people over process. And we've done all of this and so much more while successfully implementing legislation, including the 2017 legislative reforms, a groundbreaking paid family leave law, the Farm Laborers Fair Labor Practices Act, and the expanded provider law, among others. I am so proud of how we've innovated and created efficiencies in recent years, while also recognizing that there is always room for additional improvements. I look forward to sharing some of the great work that we have underway and discussing how we can make the system even more responsive to our stakeholders, and I would say, to all New Yorkers. Before I close, I do want to acknowledge the workers testifying before the committee today. Thank you for your vulnerability and your courage in sharing your stories. I know it can be incredibly intimidating, so I commend you for doing it anyway. Trust that the Board will be listening and that we are committed to continuing our efforts to make the workers' compensation system better, better for workers, better for business, and better for New York. Thank you for your time and attention, Senators, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you for your testimony, Chairwoman. Let's get started with the questions. So, as we've both stated, the injury rate is really concerning in New York State. It's actually outpacing the national average. I'm wondering what you think has attributed to the increase in worker injuries, and can you explain what your role is in this?
Yeah. Thank you for your question, Senator. You know, I can't say that I'm familiar with that data to be able to intelligibly talk about comparative studies state to state, but I will say that we here at the Board are committed to worker safety. In fact, whenever we are out doing presentations or even webinars, whether it's to the worker community or to the business community, one of the first things we tell them is, "Form a labor management safety committee," so that you can bring together your management with the workers, with labor, so that together you can take a look at, is your workplace safe? You know, what are you doing to protect your workers? We all know that there is a bit of a national shortage, right, if you will, of staffing shortage. We also have experienced that. So why not protect the workers that you have, right, and do right by them? So even though we're not the Department of Labor and don't have an actual safety role, but we do fund interdepartmental programs at the Department of Labor that I know are focused on this issue, and obviously will support any, you know, legislation on this front, as if the Governor signs it, we'll implement it fully, you know, and completely. Thank you.
You mentioned that a few years ago, the Board began holding virtual hearings. I'm wondering what the Board's plan is. Do you plan to return to solely in-person hearings, or will virtual hearings continue to be an option for injured workers?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your question. Yes, our virtual hearings, and if I may just take a step back and say, they were perfectly timed, if you will, because they really did save us during the pandemic, and benefits just continued to flow uninterrupted. So while no one has been necessarily clamoring that, you know, we reopen, so to speak, we consider ourselves to never have closed, right, because benefits are still flowing. And in fact, injured workers have appeared before us now in increased numbers than they ever did before, about, I forget the exact numbers, but significantly more than pre-pandemic. But to answer your question, yes, virtual hearings will always be an option in our system, but if a worker or any party wants an in-person hearing, they can just ask and they will get that. And we hope to do that very soon. We're doing our due diligence to make sure that our facilities are up to date, our staff is trained, and we're fully ready to go to receive in-person, you know, parties, stakeholders.
How many cases request a hearing but don't get one?
I don't know that I have exactly that data point, but I will say this: any party that wants a hearing and requests one, if there is an issue in dispute, they will get that hearing. And like I said in my opening remarks, we've held 244,000 hearings already, right? There's also, the law actually allows for an expedited hearing process if your case is controverted, which, for, you know, in jargonese speak, just means if your case is being disputed by, you know, the employer, for instance, that matter has to have a pre-hearing conference within 30 days and resolve within 90. There's also a 45-day hearing that workers can avail themselves of, right? If they have lost time from work and they are not getting their benefits, they have to have a hearing within 45 days. And if I might add, you know, from our standpoint, not every case needs a hearing. In our system, about two-thirds are medical-only, right, meaning that there are no lost wages. That person maybe got hurt on the job, got their medical treatment, was out of work a day or two, went back to work. We also get hearing requests for things like releasing attorney's fees or to confirm findings below, right, of matters that are undisputed, such as an address change, right? So rather than schedule a hearing for all of those cases, what we do is, we pursue the informal resolutions path. And I will say, they are successful. You know, about 88% of the time, parties accept those resolutions, and we're able to just issue expedited findings and make sure that everything flows smoothly.
I appreciate the information. I have several questions.
Okay.
So, just so you know, I am going to start cutting you off.
Yeah.
To avoid the filibustering.
Right.
So I have an open data question. The Board used to make their reporting and data much more accessible to the general public, and that availability has largely tapered off significantly since 2016. Why did the Board change their policy, and what do you plan on doing to move forward towards a much more transparent Board?
Right. Thank you for that question. So I don't necessarily, I can't really speak to that. I don't think that that was a concerted effort. At least, it wasn't a concerted effort in my tenure. You know, I became Chair, I was elevated to Chair in 2017, and we did not make a policy decision.
Yeah, you told us. I want to know about the open data.
Yeah. Well, that was not, it wasn't like a policy issue or a policy decision to be less responsive. You know, just like every other state, every other agency, rather, our data is open to the public. I think that there was a change in the way that we had to.
If I may, Senator Ramos?
Yes, please.
We've been putting more information on open data in the last two years. If there were changes that were made after 2016, we'll look into that and we'll see what type of data has been removed, because we're not aware of.
Are there any open data principles that you're moving towards? Do you have open data goals?
Well, we want the data to be accurate, so we receive information from all of our stakeholders, and sometimes, it depends on, we need to be sure that the information is accurate. We don't want to put data out there that's inaccurate, but we're not looking to withhold any data from you or the public. Our goal is to put the information out so that people have it. We just don't want to put out information that is inaccurate.
Okay. Let me ask about COVID. How many workers missed the COVID death benefit deadline that you know of? Or there, how many applied, right, for the benefit past the deadline?
Yeah, Senator, I actually don't have those data points, but I can get them to you. We'll follow up immediately after the hearing. We didn't prepare those data points.
Okay. We are, just so you-
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that, you know, we did do during COVID a webinar every month for workers and for employers, anyone who wanted to join. And I know that there was a steady messaging that went through those every month, because I attended them, that they should, if they thought they may have contracted COVID at work or if someone lost their life, they should file a claim. We told them when the deadline was approaching, and we, hopefully, you know, that information got out there. We made a concerted effort to ensure that.
I guess, you know, we have usage and approval rate concerns, just because they're so low. My understanding is that only 4% of workers who contracted work-related COVID filed for Workers' Comp in New York during 2020 and 2021, and only 1% were awarded benefits, based on what we know.
Yeah. I guess I'll just piggyback on what my General Counsel said.
How are you guys dealing with long COVID?
Sure. With long COVID, well, we've partnered, our Medical Director's Office, we've partnered with long COVID clinics, again, to do education and training. We put together a website and Q&amp;A and sent letters to the medical community, letting them know that, yes, COVID is a potentially compensable injury. And then just maintained communication, did a lot of training. I, myself, when the two-year deadline of the pandemic was approaching, along with my advocate for injured workers, tried to do as much education and outreach as possible to remind people, hey, you might be coming up against the deadline.
What's happening now with workers who didn't initially file when they contracted COVID? Are they able to file now if they're suffering from long COVID?
You know, our law does say that you have to file within two years, but there are, you know, there are always exceptions that can be made. We encourage, you know, claimants to file a claim and then have that matter adjudicated if they believe that they contracted COVID at work.
Okay. I'm going to yield my minute so that we can keep it moving. Senator Martins?
Thank you. I appreciate it. You know, you mentioned you handled a quarter of a million cases, and we talked about having virtual hearings. I'm curious about the impact of virtual hearings on the ability to conduct more hearings more quickly and actually provide for expedited review, because, you know, part of the concerns that we hear is that the process takes longer than it should, and, you know, frankly, anything we can do to expedite that process and give people an answer sooner is important. So I'd ask you, identify where are the pinch points? You know, if it is space, we're now dealing with these hearings virtually. If it's personnel and you need more ALJs, how many do you have, and how many do you believe you'll need in order to get through the backlog of cases that you have? How do we get answers to people more quickly? Historically, it was space. That's no longer an issue. How do we fix this?
Yeah. Thank you so much for your question, Senator Martin. I think, just to start, we also share this concern, and we're taking several initiatives to actually reduce the timeframe that it takes to schedule a hearing. In fact, in the last 18 months, we've reduced the number of cases that are waiting to be scheduled for a hearing by two-thirds. In addition, we've added 30% more law judges. And once they are fully trained and can take a full caseload, I think we're going to start to see the impact of that. We've also reduced the time that it takes for one of our claims examiners to examine a request for action that might request a hearing from 20 days to five days. We're also leveraging technology, you know, similar to how we've leveraged technology for our virtual hearings, we're also trying to identify cases that have been waiting, maybe longer than the average in a particular district, making sure that we schedule it in another district. And we also want to automatically identify these cases, right, so that we don't have to do it manually, and then they can be put in a part where there is some availability for a hearing, for a hearing, rather.
You mentioned you increased the number of ALJs by 30%. When did that happen?
That happened in the last 18 months, so now we have 100 law judges throughout the state. And we understand that, you know, the availability of our judges was a concern, but not so much in the virtual hearing world, right? Because now our judges downstate can do cases upstate.
And vice versa.
Yeah.
So we no longer are constrained by regions. We can handle things virtually. You now have more ALJs online in the last 18 months. So we would expect, as a result of that, that this backlog gets streamlined. Is 100 the right number?
I think for us, it stands to be seen, yes.
Yes, Senator. It varies from day to day, but at one point, we had 104 judges, which is the most judges we've had, to our knowledge, looking back. And we've made significant improvements in reducing the time to have hearings because of those additional judges.
Look, we have a quarter of a million cases, you mentioned, you handled last year. The backlog is still there. 100 judges being the most judges is, frankly, small solace to us, because it doesn't necessarily address the issue. We can probably hire another 100 judges. If the idea is that we're going to give people an expedited review and have a hearing immediately so that they get, both sides, the employee and the employer get finality, get the ability to have a decision, and are not left in limbo, which has been over time. And I understand we're making progress. Overtime has been a problem. So, I ask why 100, only because I don't know that that's the right number. That's why I'm asking. And so as we see these 18 months evolve with the additional 30%, I would expect that we'll see whether or not there's been a chunk of that backlog actually addressed and whether or not that number needs to be reviewed. You know, one of the points that the Chair mentioned was reimbursement rates for medical professionals. And, you know, again, a complaint is that the Board has set reimbursement rates for different procedures that are artificially low, that have made it difficult for these professionals to actually provide services. We've heard the complaints, I'm sure you've heard the complaints. You know, one of the areas has to do, well, we'll go into that in a second. If, how do you set these rates? I mean, if the rates in the real world are X, and we're finding that the reimbursement rate set by the Board is a fraction of that, how are we providing proper care for workers and getting them back into the workplace when the reimbursement rate for the doctors that are going to get them well is so artificially low? What do we do about that?
Right. Thank you for that question. You know, we do care deeply about making sure that workers get the medical treatment that they deserve and that they do it quickly, right, so that they can resume their daily lives. We can all agree that is ultimately the goal, right? So we are doing a lot more to increase the number of professionals, medical professionals in our system. We did increase the medical fee schedule rates in 2019. We intend to do so again in 2024 to remain competitive with Medicaid and Medicare. The other question you mentioned, the other part of your question was about reimbursement rates when it comes to attorneys, and maybe I'll-
No, not attorneys. No, no, no.
No? Okay. I misunderstood.
We'll leave the lawyers on the side for now.
We'll leave that separate, okay.
But medical, getting them well, if we're not reimbursing healthcare professionals at a rate that is consistent with what the market holds, are we not putting our workers in a worse position for having gotten injured than they otherwise would be? Is there not a responsibility to make sure that we have a reimbursement rate that ensures our workers proper healthcare?
Right. And we would agree with you that we do, and that's why we are going to look at the medical fee schedule again and increase that. We're also doing quite a bit more, and actually, with your help, you know, you gave us the expanded provider law. That's basically almost doubled the number of providers in our system. As we stand here today, we have 22,000 providers. Yes, please.
Come take a picture of that.
Yeah. And before the law, I will just tell you, we had about 11,000 active providers, right? So that's incredibly significant, and we have more provider types as well. And we're doing so much more to just streamline our system, to make it easier for providers in our system to operate. We have heard that complaint as well, that it's unduly burdensome for healthcare providers to participate. OnBoard is a major IT initiative that I hope we can talk to you a little bit about that's helping with the provision of medical services as well.
Are you familiar with remote surgical monitoring?
I am not familiar.
Very, yes.
Okay. The ability of doctors to participate in complex surgeries, usually involving some sort of neuropathy and some review, so that you don't necessarily have to have that person in the room when the surgery is taking place, but they are able to consult. It just is an example of the kind of disconnect that sometimes exists with regard to rates. You know, the average rate for that service outside by most providers is in the thousands of dollars, somewhere between $2,600 and $3,500. Take my word for purposes of this question. The Workers' Comp reimbursement rate is just under $300. And so when you're considering that kind of disparity, I believe it's something that you need to take a look at in terms of whether or not it is limiting our ability to provide workers with proper care. And I'll just put it on your radar for your consideration. And with that, Chair, I'll yield my time to our next senator.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Martins. Senator Fernandez, do you have a few questions?
I do.
I've been joined by Senator Robinson for being here.
Thank you so much. You mentioned building trust again, which I could agree, I've seen you do. Not too long ago, I had a constituent that came to my office with a fright. They had a fine of probably $25,000 because they didn't know that they were supposed to continue paying workers' comp as a self-employed business during the pandemic. So that was figured out to be, I guess, a lack of communication at the time that trailed to this moment. What have you been doing to alleviate that confusion and to not see any more people in this predicament?
Yeah. So one of the things that I'm the most proud of, so I'll say two things. Number one is all of our outreach and education. You know, during my tenure, we've done about 500 webinars. 500 webinars, and that's for all stakeholders in our system, right? Workers, businesses, healthcare providers. We do in-person presentations where we can. We try and invite ourselves to every Chamber of Commerce or, you know, small business development event. And then we also try and speak to, if we can't get to every worker ourselves, we try and work with those that work with workers. So for instance, worker advocates, yeah, and employers, HR professionals, but also like worker justice centers, right, to train the trainers, right, so that they are the ones, and labor, right? They are the shop stewards that are the ones that actually interface with the workers, that they can tell them, these are your rights, these are your responsibilities, and also on the business side. So that's the first thing that we've done. And then we've also opened lines of communication so that if there are any issues, they know that they can contact us. Like you mentioned, we have an advocate for business, and I think, I believe that's the office that helps you with that constituent issue. So that is a position that's written right into the law in ombudsman, whose purpose is to actually help small businesses in New York State, in particular, small businesses, which are about 75% of all businesses in New York State, with these issues, right? How to navigate a penalty. What we tell them all the time is, please do not bury your head in the sand. If you have a penalty, come to us. We're not interested in your money. We're interested in compliance with the law, right? So to the extent that we can help resolve that penalty, we will do that. And we often do that, actually.
Yeah, you have. We're seeing a lot of new workers in our communities with the new migrants that are here, some that are eagerly trying to get the papers to work, some that are working now. What are you doing to inform that community of their rights to workers' comp? Can they file a claim in their situations now? What's the status with migrants trying to seek workers' comp?
Yes, thank you for that question. The migrant community is obviously a very vulnerable community, and we all know that they will be engaging in the workforce in some way or another. So whenever we do presentations, one of the very first things I say to them is, number one, immigration status does not matter. We don't care if you're documented or not. We don't care if you're getting paid in cash. We don't care if you even know who your employer is. I mean, we do give them tips, like, you know, keep a log if you get paid in cash, you know, take pictures of a business card if, you know, a contractor approached you to do work on a job site.
I'm sorry, could you clarify? You don't need to know who their employer is?
Right, because we will figure out whether or not that employer even has coverage, right? So we just tell them, file a claim. It doesn't matter. You have a right. You cannot sign this right away. Everyone has this right, even if you're a new immigrant and might be undocumented. We also tell them that we have services in their language, right? We care very deeply, and we're committed to language access. And again, thank you, Senator Ramos, for that bill, because we are fully compliant, and I'm proud to say, and we are committed to translating, we've translated every vital document in the 12 languages that are the most populous in New York State. And we also do interpretation of our hearings in any language, primarily Spanish. About 18% of our hearings had some kind of limited English proficient service that was, that we engage in, interpretation services. So, yeah, we know that this is a vulnerable population. I guess, circling back to answering your question, and I, you know, I have to say, representation matters. And I think it's important that me being a Latina and an immigrant, someone whose first language was Spanish, is in this position, because I make it my business to make sure that workers know that this is their right and that they are protected.
Thank you.
All right. Senator Jackson.
So, good morning again. So my first question is whether or not you have enough resources to come up to speed where everything is at a satisfactory level. And so, and the executive director talked about that 104 employees or administrative law judges were the tuck that you had. I'm more concerned with whether or not you have enough resources to carry out everything you need to carry out in a timely fashion. And so my question is, you talked about, you know, getting people together if necessary, labor and management, discussing the issues and concerns so that everyone is on the same page. And so my question with you, knowing that many of the administrative law judges and other staff members are PEF and/or CSEA or MC, Management Confidential, you know, can you tell me about the relationship that you have with those three organized labor groups? And what are the major issues that have been discussed, if at all, at the labor management meetings in order to focus on the issues and concerns?
Yeah. So for the first part of your question, and again, thank you for that. You know, we're funded through assessments on employers in the state of New York, and we are trying to streamline our processes and find efficiencies wherever we can so that our administrative costs are low, right? And hopefully, that will be passed on to the employer in lower premium rates, which we do not set premium rates. But we do care about keeping our costs low. When it comes to labor management and those relationships that you mentioned with the labor unions and the different affiliates, I'm also very proud of the work that we've done there, right? Trying to rebuild trust, making sure that we foster those relationships, maintain those relationships, and more than anything, to listen to them, right? What are their concerns? As opposed to just assuming and speculating that we know what the concerns are, having that communication with them directly, right, so that we can directly address their pain points. And I'm happy to say, I don't know if I'm the first chair, but I'll say that now, and don't quote me, but I was actually invited to the PEF conference, annual conference last year, to do the keynote. And that, to me, is significant, right? Because for the most part, government is not looked at as an ally, right? We're looked at kind of as the enemy, the big bad wolf in the room. That's not the case under this administration. That's not the case under my tenure. So I'm actually very proud that we take the time to listen. And yes, there are going to be disagreements, right? We're not always going to agree on a particular solution. But so long as people feel heard, and we're listening and taking their concerns into consideration, and finding efficiencies in the system wherever we can.
And as far as those labor management meetings, obviously, you have local, dealing with one location, regional, downstate versus upstate, and statewide. When is the last time you had a statewide labor management meeting where you, as the Chair, have sat across the table from the various unions that you represent?
Well, I'm happy to say that I do attend these meetings, myself and my executive director, along with our HR professionals. So I do get to listen to the concerns firsthand, right? So it's not secondhand, oh, the judges who are all PEF are concerned about X and Y. No, I was at the table. I heard the concerns, and I was responsive, you know, to the extent that I could be.
More specifically, I asked, when was the last time you had a statewide labor management meeting?
Had a statewide, well.
Quarterly, we have quarterly meetings.
Quarterly, okay. And then obviously, you have the advocates and attorneys that are advocating for their clients. Tell me, what are the primary three issues that you're hearing from the attorneys, and probably some of them in the room here, that may give testimony? What are they hearing, what are you hearing about the top three major issues that they're bringing forward that they feel is not being addressed, and that they want it to be addressed on behalf of the clients that they represent?
Yeah, thank you. Let me give that some thought. So we have had meetings with the Injured Workers Bar Association, and they primarily represent claimants in our system. You know, in the past, historically, that relationship hasn't always been the closest. But under my tenure, and particularly in the last two years since the change of administration, we're building on that relationship. And I'm also happy to say that I think we have a very cordial one at that. Some of the things that they have raised to us are the concerns with hearings. You know, we've heard that maybe hearings take too long, or that certain parties are able to get hearings when others cannot, you know? That's not the case in our system. From our standpoint, you know, we don't make it an operational, we don't make the distinction about who's requesting a hearing. What we look at, is there an issue in dispute? And that's how, it'll either go through an informal resolutions path, or it will get a hearing, right, or if it's statutorily required. The other thing we've heard of is medical treatment, that folks have a really, injured workers have a difficult time finding providers, in particular regions of the state, you know, as you can imagine, especially specialty providers. And we are doing everything in our power to increase that, especially, you know, the specialty providers, working with our medical director, who has relationships with healthcare institutions and the like, to make sure that there are more providers, and also to make it easier to navigate our system, right? To make providers want to come back and actually want to treat injured workers in our system. You know, I personally met with, not long ago, University of Rochester, right? And they were sharing with us how difficult it is to, for their providers to take workers' comp cases because of the, how cumbersome they feel that our system is. But they've also said, you know, things are improving, right? And we've heard from other medical societies and orthopedic societies that some of the modernization efforts that we're making in particular, like onboard, our modernization project, has made the provision of medical care a lot easier for injured workers.
I hit it right there, because you've been out of time for a while now. Senator Rhodes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for your testimony. You know, what I'm hearing is that probably the single largest concern and the core issue is that the system simply isn't visible or accessible. And you would agree that most of your workers' compensation claimants aren't represented by counsel. Most are actually their pro se. The issue of hearings certainly has been a significant one, especially where you have pro se claimants. Why isn't there a process where there is an initial hearing before the workers' compensation board, if only to assess the needs of the individual parties and to make sure that the process is understood? Because the application process itself is incredibly cumbersome. You know, it's an online application that you can fill out. There's 63 different fields of questions that you have to answer. If you don't have a medical report to back that up, there's an automatic denial of your claim. So for somebody who's unfamiliar with the system and unrepresented by counsel, it is a daunting task that prevents workers from getting access to benefits that they need. So what can be done to address that?
Right. Thank you for your question. And, you know, I do share that concern, which is why I do, we do a lot of education and outreach. We created an injured workers' toolkit to make sure that folks understood how to navigate their workers' comp claim. We also engage with a lot of, like, worker justice centers and the like, to make sure that they know, since they're the ones who actually have access to workers, that they know that these are their rights. We do Know Your Rights presentations. Actually, I was supposed to do one today at Make the Road in Queens, but, you know, I'm here today with you instead. But yes, we understand that it can be a little obscure for someone, especially when they're not familiar with the system. And we are doing what we can to make sure that it's run smoother. But I will also add here that not every issue merits a hearing, right? And hearings are, if what we want is that injured worker to get the benefits, get medical treatment, and to get that expeditiously, then that is a win, right? And if we can do that, and make sure that the law is working as intended, since it's self-executing, right, and that person gets their benefits within 18 days or 10 days of the carrier having notice of the injury, that is the ideal situation. There are times where, yes, there are issues that are contested. About 10% of the time that happens. And then we have to intervene as a regulator, as a court system, to resolve those disputes. Again, I'll remind you, hearings are an adversarial process, right? An injured worker, yes, will appear before one of our judges, but the carrier will also have their attorney, right? And they will also raise defenses that they may not have done otherwise. And at this juncture, the workers may not win every single one of those, right? So I think it's actually a matter of public education. And I will acknowledge that we can do more on that front, and I would like to. So we're also trying to leverage technology and our relationships with partners, so that we can just get the word out there about their rights and be more visible.
Why does there seem to be such a delay, though, in terms of requesting a hearing? It almost seems as though when a claimant requests a hearing, it may take several months in order to get that. When a carrier seems to request a hearing, the process seems to be significantly faster. You know, if the idea is to maintain benefits for as long as possible, and that's how the system is geared, right? So workers actually gave up the right to be able to sue their employer in exchange for having access to benefits. That's the trade-off. That's how the system started. So why is the presumption that benefits will be cut off, and why is it so difficult for claimants to be able to get hearings versus carriers?
Right. So Senator, I will first say that I share your concern. Right now, it takes anywhere from six to eight weeks to get a hearing, which is down from just a year ago, you know, nine, 10, 11 weeks to get a hearing. So we are trying to tighten that timeframe for which we grant hearings. I would disagree with the characterization that one party gets hearings more often than another, but that is something we've also looked at, right? What are the hearings that we're granting? What are the decisions that we're making? Who are we granting them to, right? Because although we'd like most of the issues to be resolved through our informal resolutions process, through administrative decisions, and if there's something in dispute that is not a complex claim, and there's no testimony that needs to be taken, that also, we can issue a proposed decision, right? So what we want is for them to get their benefits timely and expeditiously. And a hearing isn't always necessarily conducive to that. But we are very mindful that there are delays in the system, and we're doing what we can to, you know, improve workflow processes, make efficiencies where we can, so that those that really need the hearings and are limited judicial resources can avail themselves of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. And I'm going to pick up where I left off. I want to talk about mental health, which is a very big area of concern in our state right now. In the past, there have been four court decisions that prohibit the Board from denying mental health claims made by essential workers who were mandated to work in person during the pandemic. And the Board voted to appeal those court decisions back in April. So I'm wondering why the Board is resistant to recognizing mental health injuries?
Thank you, Senator. Regretfully, I cannot speak to pending litigation. What I will say is that, in general, we do believe in psych injuries and mental stress, and that they can be compensable under our system. And we've done that for many, many years. We issue tens of thousands of them. You know, when I was on--
What percentage of your cases are mental health injuries?
I don't have that data point. Do you have?
How pervasive, how pervasive are mental health injuries before your Board?
I'm sorry, I spoke over you, so I didn't hear.
How pervasive are mental health injuries before your Board?
Well, for the most part, they usually come and are coupled with a physical injury. And sometimes, as a result of that injury, we can have major depressive disorder and things like that, or PTSD associated. But standing alone--
Let's talk about PTSD. When first responders were given PTSD coverage under workers' comp back in 2017, do you know how many more claims you received compared to 2016? Did it spike?
I don't have that data point either, but we can get that.
Do you have any data point on mental health injuries with you?
I do not, no.
Okay. Well, let me ask then about recruitment and retention in, at your Board. We hear from state agencies across the Board that they are facing recruitment and retention issues. And we're wondering how many open positions are currently available at the Board, and what's the Board doing to fill them?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm actually going to let our executive director, who's ahead of our operations, answer that question.
Thank you for the question, Senator. Yes, we also have challenges, but good news to report there. Just this year, we've hired 50 claims examiners to date. We're anticipating hiring another 10 or 20. Recently, a few months ago, the civil service list was certified for the examiner series. So we've been able to, as I said, hire 50. The month of April alone, we store about 28 new claims examiners. So the additional resources that they will provide will enable us to even make more significant improvements in the delivery of hearings for injured workers.
Has the Board stated the civil service assessment process to bring up the pay grades of your open positions?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, Senator?
Has the Board stated the civil service assessment process to bring up the pay grades for your open positions?
I'm not familiar with, I'm not aware of that, Senator.
We have availed ourselves of the Civil Services Helps program, and that has helped us exponentially to bring on more, especially attorneys, which we need at the agency. And just as a personal, sort of little point I'd like to add here, is that I care very deeply about retention as well. And in particular, making sure that I'm-- And in particular, making sure that I'm addressing any morale issues at the board, making sure that our, our employees actually feel valued, seen and heard, included. You know, we've done quite a bit in that space, in employee engagement. I think it's important for us to look inside, just as much as it is to look externally.
Sure. It's a good value statement. Thank you. I, I want to use the last minute to talk about streamlining the system and what the board is doing to make the system more accessible, what your timeline is. Because we, we are constantly hearing from constituents and advocates about how difficult the system is to navigate. And I'll tell you, I even have a volunteer retired DOL employee who comes to our office in Jackson Heights and solely files unemployment insurance claims, wage theft claims, and workers' comp claims.
Yes. So, yeah, I'll let, I'll let Steve, if you want to talk about--
Thank you for the question, Senator. As the chair mentioned onboard earlier in her statements, we're in the middle of a multi-year modernization of our 25-year-old legacy claim system. We're moving paper online. All of the paper processes that require manual intervention, that cause delays, are moving online into the new claim system under our onboard's program. We anticipate that'll be, take a good three years to fully implement, but we've already begun to implement certain processes, such as the prior authorization requests, that were all paper only three years ago. They're now all online. Prior authorization requests are now being handled much more expeditiously in the online environment that's provided by the new system. And the benefit of the online system will be, it'll be interactive for the users of the system. Not only will it be interactive, they'll actually have real-time status of where their claim is. Right now, they can look at our E case claim system, but they can't see what's happening in the background. They can't see that the claim is, has been routed, for example, to conciliation, whether the claim has been routed for a hearing. They just see that there was a request for action. It just, so in the new system, they'll have transparency, they'll know what exactly, what's happening, and they'll be able to communicate with stake, not only with the board, but with, with others as well, online. This is a very extensive program that we're involved in, and we're hoping to complete that within three, four years.
Three or four years, all right. Thank you, Senator Martins.
Long time.
Three or four years. And perhaps far too long when we're considering the impact on hundreds of thousands of workers who are going through this process. So I'm going to ask, we've discussed an increase in the number of ALJs by 30%. We've, we've discussed hiring new claims examiners, which I'm going to assume had a lot to do with the previously scheduled hearings that we had that were postponed, and that those hirings took place more recently than late, than, and earlier. Is there, can we get a commitment from you, that you will provide the committee and the chair with a report on the efficiencies that have been obtained as a result of the 30% increase in ALJs and these new claims examiners that have been brought onboard, and how that has impacted the system in terms of efficiency and speed within which these matters are handled, so that that can be monitored going forward? It seems that we hire people in chunks. You know, 30% more ALJs, 50 more claims examiners, but over time, there's a persistent problem. And I love the fact that we're, we're doing things virtually now, which is giving a great deal of flexibility. But we'd like to see that translated into statistics and numbers that we can rely on in terms of being able to, to chart this. The reimbursement rates for medical care, I, I think is an important piece of that. We're limited by time at this hearing, but this kind of information is important for policymakers, certainly in crafting legislation. And certainly, Chair, I would appreciate it if we got that from them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes Panel A. Thank you for being here. Not as scary as I think people thought. Very good. Can't wait for it to be an annual tradition. All right. Next up, we have Panel B from NISIF. It's Executive Director and CEO Garav Vasichd.
Morning. No. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
All right. And whenever you're ready, the clock can begin.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Chairwoman Ramos, Ranking Member Martins, and committee members, it's an honor to testify before this body about New York's workers' compensation system. Since November of 2021, I've had the privilege to lead the New York State Insurance Fund, a century-old agency with deep roots in the labor movement established by the legislature to guarantee benefits to injured workers. Today, nearly 110 years after its creation, NISIF remains the anchor of New York's insurance market, providing workers' compensation, disability, and paid family leave coverage to an estimated 2 million New Yorkers employed by approximately 200,000 employers across the state. Although it functions as an insurance company, NISIF differs from the private sector insurers it must compete with by law. Rising in the aftermath of the tragic Triangle Shirtwaist Factory fire of 1911, NISIF is the product of zealous advocacy of pioneering figures like Francis Perkins, who helped lead the organization in the 1920s and whose contributions remain foundational to NISIF's mission. Unlike most large insurers, NISIF has no shareholders to please, no stock prices to monitor, and no bonuses to award. It has only a statutory mission to promptly pay injured workers their entitled benefits. NISIF's nearly 2,000-employee-strong, unionized workforce accomplishes that objective, contributing to its longevity while fortifying the workers' compensation system. Over the last two years, as we've all contended, with the shifting priorities and intensifying demands of a post-pandemic world, NISIF has sought to reconnect with its roots and embrace its founding principles. The effort is grounded in a strong belief that even in the workers' compensation system, which is subject to stringent rules and oversight, there is an opportunity and an imperative to improve injured workers' lives and support small businesses. NISIF's embrace of these principles is best exemplified by recognition that its data can help inform not only its operations, but also the most pressing public policy issues of our time. This recognition is the cornerstone of our initiatives, from informing our collective understanding of how long COVID and climate change impact workers, to sending faster payments and enhancing communications through our smartphone technology. These initiatives, built upon a more responsive connection with injured workers, reflect NISIF's commitment to those we serve and help NISIF fulfill its statutorily enshrined public purpose. I want to give you three examples of our work. First, long COVID. Last January, NISIF published a landmark report shining a light on long COVID. Featured in the New York Times, NISIF's report analyzes thousands of COVID-19-related workers' compensation claims. The report shows that long COVID is real. Nearly one-third of workers with an established COVID-19 claim met the report's criteria for long COVID. Approximately 18% of those workers couldn't return to work for more than a year, and those who did return relatively quickly often did so while still reeling from the effects of COVID. The report also found that older adults and women were more likely to develop long COVID than younger men, as were those with comorbidities, or those who were hospitalized for their initial infection. Since the report's publication, NISIF has held briefings, including with the U.S. CDC. We've also convened experts from leading hospitals, think tanks, and various New York state agencies to discuss prevention, employer best practices, and physician outreach. In our upcoming research, we plan to gather qualitative evidence to understand better how long COVID affects workers' daily lives. A second initiative I'd like to highlight for the committee today contemplates insurance as a catalyst to drive climate action. According to leading experts, climate change is the greatest threat to global public health, and workers, including those in farming, construction, healthcare, and beyond, are vulnerable to its effects, including illnesses, injuries, and even death. Far from theoretical, the link between extreme heat and worker injuries is observable in NISIF's claims data. A preliminary analysis of approximately 95,000 workers' compensation claims found a significant correlation of both the number and severity of injuries on days categorized under the National Weather Service extreme heat classifications. For instance, injuries on average were 45% more likely and 20% more severe on such days than on days falling outside the NWS heat categories. While all industries contribute to climate change, the healthcare sector is on the front lines, confronting its effects on public health, while unfortunately also contributing to the problem through significant emissions. Healthcare leaders appear increasingly motivated to stop the self-eating cycle, but action has not been comprehensive. Last week, Governor Hochul announced NISIF's publication of insurance as a catalyst to drive climate action. The report announced the launch of a pilot program incentivizing hospitals to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions and enhance their climate resilience. Hospitals may channel the credit and any savings from reduced emissions toward direct patient care or to increase climate resilience. Finally, I want to highlight an initiative that's ongoing about what matters most to claimants, to injured workers, and that is effective communication and faster payments. When a worker suffers an injury, often it's life-altering, and it breeds uncertainty and anxiety for them and their family. With a substantial loss of income and financial obligations piling up, injured workers must get by on workers' compensation benefits, which are a fraction of their regular wages. During this time, the most common claimant questions are, who can I speak to about my claim? And when will I receive my check? To answer these and some other basic inquiries, last fall, NISIF launched a leading mobile claim app that will provide injured workers with essential claim information at their fingertips. That app has now been downloaded in just a couple of months, more than 6,000 times, and the numbers are growing. Beyond communications, NISIF has also prioritized faster payments, which can be a lifeline for workers anxious about meeting their essential obligations, including rent, food, and other bills. In this regard, our campaign to educate and enroll injured workers in direct deposit and issue payments using same-day ACH is especially helpful. Since our initiative began more than a year ago, NISIF's direct deposit enrollment has grown 46%, with thousands of injured workers now accessing their benefits on the date of payment, instead of waiting to receive a mailed paper check that itself takes days to clear once deposited. Earlier access to their own money helps workers break their reliance on short-term credit, including payday lending, check cashing, and bank overdraft fees, which strip billions of dollars annually from workers and contribute substantially to income inequality. So these are just some of the initiatives that NISIF has undertaken in the roughly two years I've been at the agency. There's a lot more that's going on that's reflected in the written testimony. But what I will say is that, at the heart of the work that we are doing, is a strong belief that even in a system whose rules are developed by others, we can make a difference to the lives of injured workers and support small businesses. NISIF's dedication to workers runs deep, and our work helps strengthen that commitment. Thank you so much for listening. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Vasichd. Well, I'm, I'm interested in this app, in this claim app. Exciting. You say 6,000 people have downloaded the app. I imagine you're also collecting a lot of data through that app.
We are.
Is that data that is collected used to disadvantage any injured workers?
No, so, so this data would be collected in the ordinary course of business, whether the app existed or not, right? So these are, it's actually a means of communication. The data that we need to process a claim will be held and generated exactly as it's always been. So this app is not an effort to generate new data. It's simply an effort to make the process of communicating with injured workers a, a lot easier for them. And I will say that we started off this initiative by doing a survey of our contact center. So we, we spoke to people, and we did this informal survey, and we found that the most common questions that were coming to our hotline were the most basic questions you could imagine. Who's my claims manager? When am I going to receive my check? And they're often tinged with this sense of anxiety and worry. So what we did, as part of the survey, was also to, to get information about how many people actually have access to smartphone technology. And we found that 86% of the claimants actually had access to smartphones. And so we said, well, you know, these basic questions should be at their fingertips.
When was this done, sorry?
This is an internal survey that we, that we did.
When?
I would say when I first started. I was curious about our, about our process. I, I wanted to make sure that the communication was as, as efficient as possible. So we sort of undertook this initiative to figure out what was actually going on. And we decided, based on that survey, that it would be helpful for us to have this app, which, you know, as we, as we step back as consumers, everybody's got an app, but--
Sure.
The reality is, this is a pioneering app, and it's focused on claimants. Typically, they're not focused on claimants. Typically, they're focused on policyholders. In this instance, it's actually the injured worker that can download and get access to their information.
But none of that information is used?
None of the information's used.
Very good.
No additional information is--
Let me ask about your reserves, because I heard that NISIF has $10 billion in excess reserves. That's a lot of money, Mr. Vasichd.
Yeah, so--
What are you doing with that money? What's the plan?
You know, I, I just, I just want to step back for a moment and, and say that reserves are actually in the liability column of the balance sheet. This is not excess money. They're there to pay claims. So it's, you know, it, it's akin to when you do your household finances and you, you know you've got to repair the roof next year, or you've got to pay, repay the driveway. You know the expense is coming up. You've got to put it in your liability side. So this, the reserves are actuarially calculated, and they're there for the benefit of the injured workers. Essentially, it's the injured worker's money.
What are your plans to enhance benefits with that money?
So our plans with that money is to continue to make payments, as we're required to make under our statutory mission. We want to make sure that we are healthy and viable over the long term, so that we can continue to make medical indemnity payments to each one of the claimants that deserves those benefits. And I think what we want to do is be absolutely prudent with how we handle a claimant's money. And it's there for that, for their protection over time. You know, these claims unfold over a period of years, so it's not just an immediate payment. It can go on for a long period of time. So it's up to us to ensure that the reserves are being handled in the most prudent way possible to assure the long-term viability of the organization and the long-term viability of our claims-paying ability.
I appreciate that statement. I have other money questions.
Sure.
I want to ask how much money NISIF spends each year on private investigators, and perhaps what the return on that investment is.
So I, I don't have that data. I'm happy to look into it. I, I will, I will say that, you know, we have to ensure that the, that the claims that are being paid are actual legitimate claims. If we don't do that, it's going to tack on costs for everybody else in the system, and it will disadvantage other claimants along the way. So our process in this regard is, is robust in terms of making sure that the, the claims are, are actually legitimate, but I'm happy to look into the actual figures.
Do you use PIs for the same cases you appeal the decisions?
Do we use PIs for the same cases that--
When you appeal a decision.
No. I, I don't think there's any sort of hard and fast rule on that. And, and, you know, this is not, you know, every claim. And we, and we try to be extremely narrowly tailored in, in terms of the use of PIs-- And we try to be extremely narrowly tailored in terms of the use of PIs, given the fact that we are a public-purpose insurance company, and we don't necessarily want to take, undertake, you know, processes and procedures that don't narrowly sort of fit within that mission. So no, as a general rule, it's not.
What about lawyers, Mr. Vasich?
Yeah.
What about lawyers? How much money do you spend on outside lawyers and firms in a year?
It's rare that we use outside law firms. Most of the claims are handled.
How do you decide? And how do you decide which ones to choose, which ones to retain?
So I think there's a process in place, and it's governed by the type of case it is, and it's governed by, you know, our reserves calculation. It's governed by all.
Do you have a shortlist of law firms that are pre-approved?
So.
By whom?
As part of the procurement process, there is a panel of law firms. So it's very tightly governed by the procurement process. So there is a panel of law firms, and we utilize those law firms as necessary.
Why doesn't NISIF decide to use in-house counsel?
We do. We have an office with in-house attorneys, and most of the claims are handled by the in-house lawyers.
How much is most?
I would say the overwhelming majority of those cases, yeah.
What about nurse case managers? How does NISIF determine when a nurse case manager gets involved in an injured worker's case?
So first of all, we have a 24/7 injured worker hotline. So if somebody gets into an accident, they can pick up the phone and get access to a nurse case manager. They're there to help them, ensure that they're directed to appropriate medical treatment. So that's one mechanism by which.
Are those nurse case managers then asked to testify for or against the injured worker at their workers' comp hearing?
No, in that sort of triage situation, no, that's not necessarily the case.
Is the worker ever made aware of what to expect, how the information may be used against them, that they share with the nurse?
So, look, I think one of the things that we are very careful about is following all of the rules and regulations that are established by the Workers' Comp Board and that are in statute. So we ensure that we are doing everything we can to comply with those requirements.
On average, how many workers' comp decisions does NISIF appeal each year?
When you say "appeal,"
Well, you disagree with.
It's a controversy.
Yeah.
The controversy rate. So I think our, I would say that it's around, I think it's probably around the average.
What's the average?
I think one.
What's the number?
I would say around 10% or so. Nine or 10% is the average. So I think, so, you know, I think.
You can just sit there.
So I think it's, I think the controversy rate is about nine or 10%, and I think we're about the average. We are guaranteed.
How do you determine whether, how does NISIF determine whether to appeal?
So I think, you know, I think there's criteria that are developed.
Sure. What are they?
In most instances, it is about whether it was a work-related injury, and the causation element is at issue in most of the cases that are controverted.
Okay, and so you have your team of in-house lawyers look through the cases and determine which ones will get appealed? How routinely do you do this? I don't have a sense of your process for this.
Yeah, so I think basically what happens is that the claims managers look at these cases and decide whether a case needs to be controverted. They have supervisors, and they also have advice and guidance from the lawyers at the State Fund. So based on the claims manager's assessment, based on the supervisor's assessment, based on the lawyers, there's a process to controvert cases.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vasich. Senator Martins?
Sure. Thank you. Good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you as well, Senator.
Thank you. So you're an insurance company, right?
Yes.
Public-purpose insurance company?
Public-purpose insurance company and a state agency.
So earlier, we heard from the Workers' Comp Board, and so you're an insurance company that administers claims that sometimes have to be heard before the Workers' Comp Board, right?
Indeed, yes.
Okay. And I know we had a lot of questions already about employee-facing coverage and coverage issues, and I know about actuaries and the ability to set proper amounts for purposes of claims and the like. I'm going to take a step back and talk about NISIF in the context also of your relationship with your employers, because by and large, I think we agree, NISIF is the safety net program for employers in New York State. If they don't necessarily qualify or they're not accepted by other carriers, the default is NISIF, right?
That's true, yes.
And we've had these discussions before about people who misclassify their employees and therefore, you know, could be out there doing work that would be rated significantly higher but will classify their employees as something else so as to cut down on their premiums, and just before they're audited, they shut down their business, they open up a new company, they disappear, and they go on, and they continue to effectively scam the system at the expense of the system and everyone else who pays into it. You would agree, right?
There is a misclassification issue for sure, and we conduct premium audits on a regular basis of the policyholders. In instances where we see misclassification, we would seek reclassification, an appropriate reclassification. We also have a Division of Confidential Investigations that gets involved in those cases, which may be a persistent case or a particularly egregious case. They investigate those cases, and oftentimes, a referral is made to a local prosecutor or the Attorney General's Office, and those cases go through prosecution, and there are arrests made and indictments as well.
So most of these companies are opened up as either an LLC or a corporation with the individuals behind those corporations not necessarily being outward-facing. Wouldn't you agree?
So when the policy is originally written.
Right.
The prospective policyholder provides information about who they are. That is a process that must be followed in order for coverage to bind. So we get that information upfront when a policy is actually bound. So we know who the people are behind those policies, regardless of what the corporate structure may be. It's just a part of the underwriting process that we would seek that information at the initial onboarding of the policyholder.
Okay, and so you have that information. Would that then create, does NISIF have a list of people who have misclassified their employees and then closed their businesses, therefore preventing them from opening up future businesses and continuing to do the same thing? Can they be prohibited from opening up other businesses until they've actually paid the state insurance fund their proper premiums, or is this an open door?
No, so we have a collections process that we undertake in a situation like that. If it's a whack-a-mole sort of a situation where they have a business, they get coverage, and then they fold the business, go away, and then start a new business to seek new coverage, we would be able to spot that during our underwriting process, and we are pretty vigilant about making sure that that happens.
Are they personally responsible, then, for those premiums? Do you pursue that against the individual?
We do pursue that, yeah. Well, I want to be clear. In order to get coverage, subsequent coverage, we would have to make sure that the prior coverage was made whole in order to bind the subsequent coverage. So yes, so they would be made whole.
So do you have statistics for us on how often that happens and what your rate of recovery? Because in the industry, I hear time and again just how pervasive that is. Misclassification, putting employees at risk by reclassifying them to a lower rate, and therefore putting the system at risk. Let me say that, because everyone else has to take on that additional cost of the risk of covering that employee. How often does NISIF recover from these individuals personally?
So if you're talking about misclassification generally, our premium audit process catches that, and the classification is, you know, made more appropriate depending on what the workforce actually looks like. So if, you know, if the paperwork says that these are clerical staff, but in fact, they're roofers, that's a problem. We would have to make sure that they're classified properly.
And if the company closes, do you pursue that against the person who identified themselves as the owner of the company beforehand?
We do. We do everything we can to pursue and to collect on the funds.
And so my question is, do you have statistics for us on how much has been recovered, how many companies and individuals have been pursued? Because it's a two-point question. Misclassification is an example. They're also not classifying the proper number of employees, where you have 100 employees, you write down that you have five. You go out there and you do $100 million of work during a year, and at the end of the year, you close down and you disappear. What has NISIF done, and obviously, it's an exaggerated example, but what has NISIF done to go and recover those amounts from those individuals that do that? Because it seems to be not only pervasive, but it seems to be the same bad actors that continuously take advantage of the system over and over again.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, premium fraud tacks on roughly $32 billion of cost on the workers' comp system. About $23 billion of that is premium fraud under the overarching fraud umbrella. So, you know, this is a significant problem. For us, again, it's about premium audit, investigations, referrals to prosecutors. When a business disbands, we have our collections process to make sure that we recover the funds. That often leads to litigation. I'm happy to provide data around how often that happens.
If you can provide it to the committee and to the chair, I'd appreciate it. But you mentioned $23 billion, which I guess is a statistic that has been analyzed. Can you tell me, last year, how much of the $23 billion was recovered?
So those are national numbers.
Okay, and so in New York, let's say proportionately, you know, how much have we recovered here?
Yeah, so the recoveries are actually increasing. We've made some important changes to our Investigations Division. Last year, we recovered around $8 million in these types of cases, and those were prosecuted cases with the District Attorney's Office in Manhattan for the most part.
Going back now to your role as an insurance company, we had some coverage questions earlier with regard to mental health. Is it NISIF position that they do cover mental health issues for injured workers as a compensable item and claim?
Mental injury is compensable, both in connection with a primary injury as well as a sole injury. But there are, you know, some additional requirements to meet on those claims that are solely for mental injuries.
And going back to some questions we had earlier about the reimbursement rate for doctors, again, there are questions having to do with the propriety of the reimbursement rates, given the market conditions at the time, and whether or not we are keeping healthcare professionals outside of this arena by artificially keeping those reimbursement rates low. Can you speak to that?
So I really can't speak to the specific issue that you've raised. You know, we are a participant in the ecosystem. We pay providers according to the rules that are established by the Workers' Comp Board. And, you know, whatever those rules are, whatever the changes are that might be forthcoming, we would comply with those, and I'd refer back to the chair's testimony on that.
Okay. I do look forward to your follow-up on this issue, because in a very real sense, you are the safety net program for the state, and to the extent that there are people who are taking advantage of that, they're not just taking advantage of every other employer in the state, they're taking advantage of their own employees by putting them in harm's way. And so the sooner we get our handle on that and hold them accountable, I think the better off we're all going to be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Martins. Senator Jackson, you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good still morning, right?
Good morning, yes.
Okay. Well, good morning to you. So I wanted to know what was your relationship with respect to the State Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Board in addressing whatever the major issues of concern that you have? So you, who do you respond to? The State Insurance Fund Board of Directors?
Yeah, that's right. So in terms of the relationship between the New York State Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Board, it's a relationship of regulated entity and regulator. They are our regulator. They write the rules, come up with the rules of the road. We implement, we follow those, and we have a very good relationship in that regard.
So but you've heard the issue that I've raised by my colleagues about that there's a feeling out there that the doctors are not being paid enough? And have you made recommendations to the Workers' Compensation Board on it? Is it, do you have sort of like a relationship discussing the major issues? Recruitment and retention? I heard that with the chair as far as, you know, to reallocate some of the positions to a higher level or to reclassify them as far as, if necessary. So I just, I don't think that the State Insurance Fund in your capacity is just to go along. I think that you want to be advocates for who provides the resources for you to do your job, and that is what? The employers outside that are members of the State Insurance Fund? Is that correct?
So what I would say is, in terms of providers in the ecosystem, you know, of course, in order to handle claims and to manage claims, you need providers. A worker gets injured, they're going to need treatment, there needs to be providers in the system, as there are. So again, we have a regulated entity and a regulator relationship with the Workers' Comp Board. We, you know, obviously speak to them from time to time, and where appropriately, you know, we have our conversations, but there isn't any sort of a formal advocacy of positions along the way. It is a, you know, there is that regulated entity, regulator relationship that we have, and we maintain that relationship in a healthy way.
Well, okay, in my opinion, you know, the people out there want to see the State Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Board as advocates for the people that are being injured in order to receive the type of funds that they need in order to survive as a result of an injury or death or a loss of limbs. That's the bottom line for me, because those are the people that we represent and that you represent also in some respects.
I couldn't agree more. I, you know, I think a lot of the work that we're doing at the New York State Insurance Fund is focused exactly on that question, and the way we are supporting, you know, attention on those questions is by using our data to inform bigger-picture public policy around exactly the elements that you just spoke about.
And you mentioned you came out with one report last year on what? Long COVID?
Came out with a report on long COVID last year and a report about climate change and its effect on workers and the healthcare industry just last week.
And what title within the State Insurance Fund works with the State Insurance Fund? Is that the claims people?
Yeah, it's a mix of everyone. We have a claims division, we have a policyholder services division, we have an actuarial division, we have an investigative division, we have the Office of the General Counsel. So yeah, so we have various divisions within the organization.
And do you have labor management meetings with the labor unions and the State Insurance Fund? And what issues are they saying with respect to within State Insurance Fund and between the State Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Board?
Yeah, so one of the first things that I did when I first started my job at the State Fund was to listen to workers and get a sense of what was actually happening. And part of that process was to sit down with the representatives of the unions to hear directly from them what those issues actually were. And what we've done is undertaken a process where we listen to those concerns and we actually respond to them. One of the biggest issues was career mobility and being able to advance, and I'm happy to report that we've made more promotions at the New York State Insurance Fund in response to that feedback that I received originally than we ever have in its history.
Excellent. I'm just curious, how long have you been at the State Insurance?
November 2021.
Since November 21?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Senator Rogue, do you have questions?
Just a couple of follow-ups, if you don't mind, and thank you again for your testimony. Sorry, I kind of stepped in midway through. It's a busy, it's a pretty busy time here, as you can imagine.
I understand.
What do you view, and I missed your opening remarks, but what do you view the role of the State Insurance Fund within the context of a larger role of the State Insurance Fund within the context of a larger workers' compensation system than B?
So, we have a very narrowly tailored defined mission and statute. We have to pay injured workers promptly. We have to maintain a solvent fund. We are also a public purpose insurance company, and what I am trying to do in the work that we're doing at the State Fund is to leverage the data that's never actually been tapped into before. And some of the work that we've done, for instance, on long COVID and on climate and extreme temperatures on workers, is really doing a deep dive into our data to inform those issues. And they're directly related to our public purpose. This is about paying claims to injured workers. We want to make sure that we are doing what we can to prevent injuries in the future. This is one of the most underappreciated elements of our mission, is preventing injuries and getting ahead of injuries. So, we have an entire risk control division. We've got roughly 40 people in it, and this is their sole focus. They look at the data, they try to get ahead of the issues. And, you know, they'll talk about extreme heat, they'll talk about OSHA compliance, they'll provide consulting services free of charge to employers that need it to meet their obligations. And this is a very robust process. It is a process that is very interactive. You know, for example, you know, in transportation, you might see more back injuries for truck drivers, or in other settings, you might see a trend emerging. The risk control division's purpose is to get ahead of those injuries and engage directly with a policyholder and speak to them about how you prevent injuries. And we do that, we've done that, and we're going to get better at doing that as we leverage the data on injuries and the trends that we have in the data that haven't been tapped into before.
One of the, and I'm just going to jump around a little bit, and I apologize because our time is limited. One of the issues that I'm hearing is with respect to the preauthorization of procedures. You know, for example, there's currently a $1,000 limit. I know we passed legislation earlier this year, not sure that, whether it ever made the governor's desk or not, whether it passed the Assembly, to expand that to $1,500. But right now, the law is $1,000. Preauthorization without the need to demonstrate medical necessity, those procedures for the purpose of accelerating payment of those claims, those are pre-authorized procedures. Carriers have sort of taken that and turned the lack of preauthorization into an opportunity for an automatic denial, triggering a hearing. What's been the State Insurance Fund's position with respect to that? And how can we change the attitude among carriers to make the process fairer and more equitable in how those are evaluated?
I can tell you that the State Insurance Fund, we don't look at the preauthorizations or pre-denial in any way. We want to be as responsive as possible in instances where we need to engage in the authorization process, prior authorization process, and we want to move quickly to make sure that the required approvals are delivered in a timely fashion. We have, you know, an entire group of people that are dedicated to prior authorizations and prior approvals. And, you know, I think the process is moving about as swiftly as it can at present, but we're always striving to improve. And, you know, one of the things that I say to people at the State Insurance Fund is, regardless of how good the numbers might look in a given snapshot in time, you can't declare victory. You have to constantly strive to improve, and you have to be very intentional about that, be very intentional about that. And that's the way we look at it. I also want to emphasize oftentimes, as I do, is that there is an ecosystem in the workers' compensation system. And that ecosystem, in that ecosystem, we're one participant, and we follow the rules. We don't determine the rules, we don't come up with the rules. Our job is to comply with the rules, and we are complying with them. And we're trying to be as efficient as possible in complying with that and staying true to our public mission.
Just in the limited time that we have left, I just want to touch quickly on qualification with a partial disability. Workers expected to demonstrate continued involvement in the labor market by having to continuously look for work, even in situations where there's no hope of them going back to their previous work. So, for example, a construction worker who sustains a back injury might never be able to go back to work as a construction worker, but is still expected to go ahead and look for other work, even though it's not in their field, not what they're trained in. Do you think that there are modifications that can be made to existing policy or existing law to lessen that burden?
So, again, what I would say is, you know, what I would say is that we don't make the rules, we follow the rules. And to the extent that there's room to do anything, we'd be happy to provide any input as necessary and appropriate along the way.
Thank you.
Well, it's a good thing we help make rules, and that's part of our job. You seem to be very proud of your reports, Mr. Vaseesh, and I'd say rightfully so. I want to ask about whether all of the information in these reports and beyond are open data source and available.
So, I think what we are trying to do first is to tap into the information that's never been tapped into by standardizing and by making it usable. Along the way, we want to analyze the information and put it out so that policymakers can use that work product to support a lot of the big picture public policy issues that are out there. Eventually, down the road, I think, you know, it's something to strive for, but we're just not there yet. Our data really needs to be managed in a way that it's usable. And, you know, we're undertaking the process.
When will you manage your data so it's usable?
Well, so this is a, you know, it's, the New York State Insurance Fund is a repository of information going back generations on a whole host of things. It's the, you know, data management.
But I would be hoping that at least you're kind of working backwards here, right? And not starting with Francis Perkins.
No, although, you know, I think we're inspired by Francis Perkins and, you know, and a lot of the work that we're doing. And...
I think if there's just a general frustration with NISIF being able to pick and choose what data it is that they make available to the public, particularly around appeals and rejections, and a lot of the questions we're asking you today.
You know, I'd be happy to engage with you on all of the issues that you've raised here today and beyond.
I don't believe that NISIF should be able to retain information or be able to choose what information you should publish. I'm a big believer in open source data, and I think that part of the conversation between us will continue. I want to ask about audits. You know, we actually, and I want to thank your intergovernmental team, they were tremendously helpful. We had a contractor who was audited and found to have had an incorrect balance. But he had been trying to get in contact with NISIF for months directly, and he was just about to give up when he came to us, and we were able to help him figure out how to pay. What pathways do contractors have in order to resolve these issues, you know, so they have some relief?
So, without speaking to a particular issue, because I just can't speak about specifics here, let me just say that about 81% of our entire book of policyholders is made up of small businesses. We insure 42,000 contractors. Most of those are small businesses. And we want to be as engaged with them as possible and try to make it very easy for them to do business with us. And one of the things we did just last week is announce a slew of initiatives that will help do exactly that. So, we've established an office of small business, we've got dedicated staff that are going to deal directly with these small businesses. We've offered a premium credit for personal protective equipment. And what we've also done is spread out the premium payments, over 12 equal monthly payments, as opposed to, you know, an initial lump-sum payment, and that's going to help them with their cash flow.
Do you monitor whether NISIF workers are getting back to contractors and people asking questions in a timely manner?
Yeah. No, that's monitored, and, you know, it's a...
Because I just find it unacceptable that a contractor was trying to get ahold of you guys and get an answer for many, many months, and it took our office engaging with yours in order for them to get their answers.
Yeah. So, for anything specific, I'm, you know, happy to work with our Intergov Office and deal directly with you on that. Our data and what we're seeing in terms of our KPIs, and as I said, we're constantly seeking to get better, you know, you've got a lot of people dedicated, I mean, they themselves are workers, they're, you know, they're unionized workforce, they understand how important it is to get back to people in a timely fashion, and we monitor that, and we look at that.
In my last few seconds, I just want to confirm that you said NISIF has not had a targeted service for small businesses for the majority of your customers before last week?
No. So, we've always looked at small businesses in a kind of a special way, given that they make up such a large portion of the insurance we provide. But what we've done is we've established a dedicated team now that's solely focused on dealing with small businesses. It's not that they, we didn't have people dealing with small businesses. Now, we have a dedicated team on small businesses so that they're much more responsive in providing customized and bespoke services to particular businesses that might need, might be experiencing some sort of a challenge.
I can't wait to learn more, but unfortunately, my time is up, and Senator Martin stepped out, so you're off the hook for his follow-ups. Thank you for your testimony this morning, and we'll continue working together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for Panel C, we are actually going to turn attention, our attention to these monitors. Panel C will be virtual. We're going to be joined by the Office of the Attorney General, Karen Casase, the Labor Bureau Chief, and Brooke D'Angelo, who is an injured worker.
I can hear you. Yes, it's good.
Thank you, guys. All right, Ms. Casase, good to see you. Thank you for joining us. And you may begin when you're ready.
Great. Good morning, Chair Ramos and committee members. My name is Karen Casase, and I am the Bureau Chief for the New York State Attorney General's Labor Bureau. I've been in this position for over four years. Prior to joining the Attorney General's Office, I was the Director of the Employment Unit at the Legal Aid Society in New York City for over nine years. I want to thank you for convening this important hearing and for giving our office an opportunity to share our recent experiences, feedback, and insight. Today's hearing offers many of us working on labor issues in New York State a chance to report on the effectiveness of the workers' compensation system and its capacity for protecting the rights of employees and employers by ensuring the proper delivery of benefits to injured workers. We look forward to discussing possible legislative and policy changes which we think would improve the system. I also want to note that Attorney General James and the rest of our office continue to appreciate the strong and constructive relationship between our office and the legislature. As with other issues we've worked on together, we offer our time and any relevant expertise we may have to assist with the legislative objectives of the committee, legislative leadership, or other individual legislators. The Labor Bureau affirmatively investigates and litigates matters affecting workers in New York State. Our office prioritizes enforcement of violations against low-wage workers, including wage theft, discrimination, safety, and family and medical leave. In addition, the Labor Bureau defends the New York State Department of Labor and Workers' Compensation Board when their decisions are challenged in court. Allison Kent Friedman is the Section Chief of the Workers' Compensation Section. Prior to joining the Attorney General's Office, she worked at the New York State Insurance Fund for 28 years. Recently, in keeping with our office's emphasis on worker protection, the Workers' Compensation Section began investigating employers who use discrimination, intimidation, or retaliation to prevent injured workers from accessing the workers' compensation system. Through this work, we have become aware that there are currently gaps in the workers' compensation law. Accordingly, we have the following suggestions which we feel would improve injured workers' access to the workers' compensation system and strengthen the integrity of the system. First, we are aware of unscrupulous employers who discriminate and retaliate against workers who are eligible for or use the workers' compensation system. Employers are often eager to prevent workers from filing workers' compensation claims so that the cost of their insurance will not rise, particularly in industries with a high incidence of injuries where the premium rate for certain job classifications is already high. Employers can intimidate and deter their workers from filing claims by threatening them with adverse employment actions, including firing and diminished work hours. Due to the workers' lack of knowledge concerning what rights they may have to collect benefits when they are injured, employers can also manipulate workers into not telling medical providers that they are being treated for a work-related injury. This undue pressure is particularly prevalent in instances where the worker is not a native English speaker or has fear of exposing their immigration status. The law does not currently provide sufficient penalties for these illegal actions. The current enforcement statute, Workers' Compensation Law, Section 128, provides authority for the Board to commence administrative actions against employers who retaliate against workers seeking to file claims. However, the penalties the Board can assess for these violations are minimal, $100 to $500, and are paid to the state treasury rather than to the worker. Strengthening penalties under this statute would provide more of a deterrent to employers contemplating unlawfully threatening their employees. Because of the low penalties, most Section 120 claims are brought by pro-sake claimants as there is little to no financial incentive for counsel to represent them. This may cause extensive delays in resolving the action and ultimately make it easier for employers who are bad actors to avoid liability. Accordingly, we suggest Workers' Compensation Law, Section 120, be amended to add the ability to award liquidated damages and costs and attorney's fees to the employee in the event of a successful claim, along with any other recourse the legislature deems appropriate to bolster compliance and protect workers' rights. For medical-only claims, there is also difficulty in obtaining legal representation. And these medical-only claims are claims where there is an accidental injury but no lost time from work. This can be problematic for claimants as they often cannot determine how to get medical expenses paid on the claim without an attorney's assistance. Under Workers' Compensation Law, Section 24, attorney's fees are only paid out when a claimant receives an award of benefits for lost wages to compensate for losing time from work. The attorney's fees are considered a lien on the lost wage benefits. So, if there's no lost time from work, no attorney's fees can be awarded. We recommend expanding attorney's, awards of attorney's fees to also include claims where only medical benefits are paid out. We are also aware of instances where employers have deliberately disclosed the existence of confidential workers' compensation information in order to harass workers who have filed claims. We have also seen employers looking to minimize the cost of an accident who have coerced employees outside the presence of an attorney into private financial settlements of their claims. These settlements were undoubtedly much smaller than the employees would have obtained had they filed claims and had access to legal advice. Accordingly, we recommend amendments to Workers' Compensation Law, Section 110-A, to provide for individual remedies on behalf of the employee for the deliberate unlawful disclosure of confidential workers' compensation claim information, and for amendments to Workers' Compensation Law, Section 32, to provide for additional penalties against employers who coerce employees into financial settlement of their claims in order to avoid high workers' compensation insurance costs. Another significant issue we have encountered is workers' lack of knowledge of their entitlement to workers' compensation benefits. Workers' Compensation Law, sorry, Section 1, Section 51, currently requires that employers post a notice only in English and Spanish. Sorry, one second. Workers' Compensation Law currently requires that employers post a notice only in English and Spanish of workers' compensation insurance coverage in the place of business so as to notify workers that coverage is in place in the event they are injured. However, there is no requirement that the employer directly inform the employee of his right to file a workers' compensation claim when the employee sustains... a workers' compensation claim when the employee sustains a workplace injury, nor is there any requirement for providing information in languages other than English and Spanish. Currently introduced legislation by Senator Ramos would require the notice to be posted in other language, as determined by the Board and employers to provide to the worker when they are injured, a notice of workers' compensation insurance requirement in their native language. This legislation would also provide for monetary penalties for noncompliance. Workers' lack of awareness of their rights to benefits is especially problematic among agricultural and construction workers and in other industries with large populations of workers that are not native English speakers. Although the Board does have information on language access resources on its website, workers and employers are often unaware of where to look for it. We recommend the creation of an education and outreach initiative to fund worker advocates to provide such training to employees and employees about how to use the workers' compensation system, what their obligations are, and what language access resources are available. We are also aware that payment of medical expenses is a problem in cases where coverage is controverted, as it is difficult to determine who pays the claim if the claim is denied and there's no backup insurance. An expedited process for determining coverage or creation of a special adjudication part to hear such issues so that they are determined within a 30- to 45-day window would aid in resolving this issue. Finally, we note that coverage for independent livery drivers in general, under executive law, Section 160-DDD, is still severely limited, shifting unnecessary and often expensive losses to the uninsured employers' fund, a division of the Workers' Compensation Board funded through annual assessments of affected employers in the state. We would encourage the legislature, through an inclusive process, to determine how best to achieve comprehensive workers' compensation coverage for independent livery drivers. We very much appreciate the opportunity to share our input with you here today, and welcome the chance to continue this conversation moving forward. Thank you.
A wealth of bill ideas in that testimony. Thank you so much, Ms. Casase. I know we're also joined by Brooke DeAngelo, who is an injured worker. Hi, Brooke. Thank you for taking the time today. There we go. Now, we can hear you. Hi, Ms. DeAngelo. You can begin.
I'm good. I just want to talk a little bit about my experience. The loss of humanity and lack of personal connection are the top and most important failures of the workers' compensation system. Every single additional failure is subsequent to this. When I was initially injured, I found out that there is an immediate stigma attached to having a workers' compensation claim. You have to constantly prove your injury and advocate for yourself. You have to go through examinations that are often humiliating while automatically being looked at as someone who wants an extended vacation or just wants pain medication. I also learned that my word and ability to communicate aren't enough. I had to get an attorney immediately. Nothing seems to get approved without the backup of an attorney. The system is designed to make it so the injured worker doesn't understand the steps, formularies, request procedures, or the form titles. Because of the combination of my injuries, I had the need for an abdominal surgeon, GI specialist, pain management doctor, and a spine surgeon. First, I made calls to those I knew and trusted and who are highly recommended, and I think two out of the 30 that I reached out to actually accepted workers' compensation. There are so few specialists in Western New York who accept workers' comp patients. Their reasoning? Too much paperwork, not worth the trouble, time wasted, frustration, and too little payment. It's just not worth it to them or their company. Those who do accept workers' comp are overwhelmed, cannot give personal attention. Their staff members are constantly chasing the denials and fulfilling requests to escalate to the next level. Patients are afraid, okay? They finally get into a doctor they often feel stuck with to begin with, and they don't speak up for their health anymore. They're in fear of being discharged, therefore having no other doctor to turn to. And then, patients don't get the quality of life-saving procedures and surgeries on time or at all. I've been unable to see a GI specialist for my abdominal injury. There are none who accept workers' compensation within a five-hour drive of me. I have to cautiously advocate for myself with my doctors, afraid that I'll be considered an annoyance to the staff or be pushed to the bottom of the pile. I learned that no matter how dire, there is no such thing as an instant approval. For a CT scan through workers' comp, the doctor fills out forms, makes a request to the carrier. The carrier and attorney may have to confer. The carrier may take days to approve or deny. The doctor may have the treatment request moved up to a Level 2 or 3, or, if denied again, the attorney will request a hearing. I know that when my attorneys have requested hearings on my behalf, the response is honestly slow. The hearing gets scheduled through comp board, and that scheduling system seems to be backed up, unless you're the carrier, that is, who is guaranteed a hearing within 21 days of their request. In the meantime, I'm in communication with my only lifeline, which is my attorney. And the attorneys can't even communicate with my doctors directly. Often weeks later or longer, the CT scan may get approved, only to wait for a call from a third-party schedule, a company you never heard of, I never heard of, and the carrier contracts to make your appointments for your scans. That's always a tedious back-and-forth game, too. By the time you get your scan, you feel defeated, and you feel like you've lost hope. And in May of 2022, I had a spinal cord stimulator implant, and the pain was excruciating. I felt like there was a hot ax sticking out of my back. The ripping, searing, breathtaking pain was barely suppressed. I was being released from the hospital after a day and a half, and the surgeon told me he sent the post-op pain medication script through the workers' comp portal. To my surprise, there were no approved pain medications at the pharmacy when my husband went to pick it up. I called my attorney, and they had no luck reaching out to my adjuster since it was Friday at 3:30 p.m. I had no post-operative pain medication. I remember being in so much pain, screaming in my living room, and attempting to control the burst of tears, because crying made the pain worse. When my attorney reached my adjuster on Monday, they found out that the medication had been denied. The doctor resubmitted it to the next level. Two days later, the adjuster approved it, and guess what? It had to go through the third-party medication release company. Still, more back-and-forth occurred. A huge game between my attorney, adjuster, me, the doctor, and the third-party lasted a week. One week it took for me to get post-operative pain medication. The trauma I endured and the PTSD are going to be lifelong battles. Living in fear of losing your workers' comp payment, dealing with private investigators, not getting approved for treatments and medications on time, anxiety, depression, the impact on my marriage, the dependency on my husband, humiliation, and hopelessness, the list really goes on. I'm sorry. This has been tough. There's never a shortage of tears when I talk about this, even though I've been going through it for six years, because it wasn't supposed to be this way for me. I'm educated. I have potential. I have ambition. I never sat still. I always volunteered. I used to make a difference in the world, and not anymore. Delays and lack of doctors have contributed to me now being permanently disabled. I spend my days in pain, not able to afford any luxuries such as dinner by favorite restaurants or having a honeymoon, and I'm just sad thinking of who I could have been. If we make it simpler for a doctor to treat the workers' comp patient, the injured worker, then we have more participating physicians. If we had more choices of doctors, then patients could get treated in a timely manner. If injured workers could get treated promptly, guess what? They can focus on normalcy and returning to work. I know I haven't endured the worst of it. I implore you to bring up workers' compensation in any room in Western New York, and just be prepared to hear the shocking stories that follow. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. DeAngelo. I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues here when I say that we are so sorry that you've had this experience. It's grossly unfair and unacceptable, both the timeline, the lack of access to care and medication. This is not what a New York worker should experience when going through the unmanageable. But we are very appreciative of your courage today to speak up and tell us about your story, because this is how we believe we can fix the system and introduce legislation and keep fighting for the bills that we have introduced in order to make change happen for you and so many other workers across the state. Can you tell us, do you mind sharing with us how it was that you were able to eventually access care? What options did you have?
I ended up with someone I called Dr. Gut Butcher, and I felt stuck with him because that's who accepted comp. And he butchered my abdomen beyond repair. At this point, the scar tissue is, there's nothing we could do about it that I'm aware of. And every time I go to a new surgeon, they recommend that I see a GI specialist, where I explain there are none. The closest one I found years ago was two hours away from me, and I went to see him, and he looked at me and he said, "How am I going to help you from two hours away?" Like, the ride down there killed you. So, I'm still struggling trying to find help for that.
Can you describe how perhaps better communication between your attorney and the doctors who have seen you and operated you could have helped?
They absolutely could have helped, because these attorneys are trained to understand what this paperwork means and what they're even looking for. Because I know I've had doctors try to fill out their portion of these forms, and they're lost. Or, you know, their medical assistants are trying to fill them out. And, I mean, it really almost takes a legal degree. So, if that communication were available, I think it would cut a lot of time wasted.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to leave it there. Senator Martins, do you have questions for Ms. DeAngelo?
Just a couple. One, can you tell us again the name of the carrier?
I did not disclose the name of the carrier.
Would you?
I'll be able to send that to you privately.
Okay. I think it's important when there are incidents of bad behavior that those who are responsible be held responsible. So, I appreciate it. Please send it to me.
I will.
And we'll take it from there. But for me, there is no one echoing Senator Ramos's point. This is not how a worker in New York can or should be treated. And, you know, certainly, we have the ability, as a legislature, to hold those accountable. There are other means that we can take. But post-surgery, for someone not to have access to medication is criminal. It is gross negligence, and it certainly is something that we have to follow up on, because there are things that are possibly disputed. And we understand there's a process here. That's why we have a workers' comp board. There are hearings. There are different opinions. There are things where there is general consensus, and there can be no disputing. And I am just very sorry you've had to go through this process. As I think you may have heard some of our questioning earlier, it is related to accountability. It is related to choices for employees, for workers who are injured, healthcare workers and healthcare providers being compensated properly so that they are available also to our workers, and we'll continue to fight. Thank you for your story. I appreciate you having the courage to share that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move right along to the other senators for Ms. DeAngelo. But Ms. Casase, we'll come right back to you. Senator Jackson, do you have any questions for Ms. DeAngelo?
No. I don't have any direct questions, but clearly, this is a case that no one wants to really hear about from an advocate's point of view. We, as I said earlier, we need to make sure that we're working for the people that need to help, and that's what this is about. And so, also, building up to make sure that doctors and attorneys are being paid appropriately where they'll be glad to take the case and not try to, you know, dodge getting out and taking care of people that need their services as an MD or as a professional or as an attorney. These are the people you're going to be looking for to help you. And so, what we can do as legislators is to try to make sure that the environment is conducive to those individuals helping you and hundreds of thousands of others that are in need just like you. Please stay positive. You're powerful, and you deserve a lot of credit. You got to keep moving forward on behalf of yourself and your family.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Senator Rhodes?
I want to, this is less a question and more a comment, and I want to thank you for the courage of coming forward. And the sad part is, as much as we speak about bad actors in the field, I'm afraid that your story is not the exception, that your story may actually be the rule. Because the process to even file a claim, and you said this yourself, that without the assistance of your attorney, as difficult as the process was, it would have been impossible for you to be able to do this on your own. Simply understanding the forms that you have to submit, the process that you have to go through, in a process that is supposed to be designed so that you can do this as a pro se, so that you don't need counsel to be able to file this paperwork. It's representative of a system that's broken, and it's representative of a system that is in need of an attitude adjustment. And it almost seems as though the focus of the workers' compensation system at this point is how to prevent workers from getting benefits, as opposed to how to make it easier for workers to be able to access those benefits. And I'm not discounting the fact that there are legitimate issues at times. There are legitimate disputes about medical necessity of specific procedures. There are legitimate disputes about attachment to the labor market. But it seems as though the focus has become so carrier-friendly that it's lost focus of the point of the workers' compensation system, which is to provide benefits to injured workers, provide access to medical care to injured workers, to provide, as measly as it may be, given the workers' compensation rates, to provide some assistance to their families so that they can continue to pay bills while they're not receiving their paychecks from their employers due to the injury that they sustained at work. We seem to have lost focus from that. So, I want to thank you for your courage in coming forward, for sharing your story. And know that the issues that you've raised today, I think, certainly have resonated with those of us who are on this panel, and certainly everyone who is watching today, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Senator Rhodes, for those words. Go ahead, Ms. DeAngelo. Would you like to speak?
I just, I really, I just want to say thank you, because this is who I used to be. I used to be out there for the causes that were important. And I've kind of been silenced in this case, because if you speak up or you say the wrong thing about your health, your doctor, the insurance company, let's just put it this way, since I came forward with my story two weeks ago, three weeks ago, magically, a private investigator has been watching me for two weeks after having this injury for six years and a dozen surgeries.
Well, thank you, Ms. DeAngelo. I want you to rest assured that you are making a big difference today, and, you know, perhaps this is the cause that you were meant to champion, despite your sacrifices and despite your pain and the injustices you have suffered. Please know that you have friends here in the legislature who feel compassionate towards your experience, and we are working our hardest to improve the system so that it never happens again. But thank you for your time with us today.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Casase, thank you for waiting. You gave us so much information and so many, pointed to so many areas for improvement. I'm very grateful for your testimony as well. Can you identify any patterns or trends where you see as to which board decisions get challenged in court?
I think, probably, it makes sense for me to consult with, as I said, Allison Kent Friedman is our Section Chief for the Workers' Compensation Section, so I'd like to have her weigh in on that, and we can provide that information to you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, some employers see the penalties under the current worker comp enforcement statute as the cost of doing business rather than the deterrent they should be. How should the legislature rectify this, do you believe?
Yeah, I think that was, you know, the first proposal. The first proposal that I mentioned was an amendment to Section 120 of the workers' comp law. And because the current penalties are really so minimal, $100 to $500, it is, you know, it's really negligible. And so I think it's important for the legislature to focus on that and increase penalties to, you know, where they're significant, where they really would be a deterrent to employers to trying to dissuade a worker from filing a claim. And I think it's important to add on attorney's fees and costs so that attorneys will take these claims. Because these, you know, this is, I think, just a situation that is widespread where employers are trying to convince workers, "Don't say it was work-related. We'll, you know, we'll just pay, you know, your hospital bill right now." And, you know, and you don't have to let anybody know. And then it really can turn into, you know, a longer... The injury goes on for a longer time. The worker has much, many more expenses that are not covered and is just not getting the benefits that they're entitled to.
Do you have a number... A suggested number? I mean, for the increased penalties? What do you think would actually, you know, overcome this idea that it will just be the cost of business?
Yeah, so I think it's helpful to look at Labor Law Section 215, which, as you all know, the anti-retaliation provision, which includes liquidated damages up to $20,000. And so there is, you know, some discretion. But it, you know, it clearly goes to a significant amount. And if, you know, if employers were aware that it could be $20,000 per person that they dissuaded, I think that that would... That could change behavior.
Thank you for that suggestion. Now, I don't know if you got to watch the beginning of our hearing this morning. But during the first panel with the chairwoman of the workers' compensation board, we began discussing the board's decision to appeal a few cases where the courts found it appropriate to grant workers' comp relief for mental health injuries. As you know, there are four cases that the workers' comp board has appealed. And so I was wondering... I wanted to hear from your legal expertise if you could impart some wisdom on what the legal rationale behind those appeals might be.
So, as I said, our office represents the workers' compensation board when their decisions are challenged in court. So I do not think that I can comment on their thoughts on any pending cases. But I think the one thing that I can say is that they have not yet filed an appeal in those cases. So it... Maybe that decision is not... Has not been made there yet.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll leave it there. Senator Martins?
Sure. Thank you very much. You know, I understand the enforcement references that you had had to do with enforcement with regard to retaliation by employers. Do you see a role for the Attorney General's office as the, I guess, attorney for the people of New York to take action against carriers who have a policy of non-payment or a policy that doesn't prioritize getting benefits to these employees? We heard just recently, just a few moments ago, a rather egregious case, which I think most would agree, you know, would require, if that was a... Not an isolated incident. If it is an isolated incident, obviously, there would still need to be some consequence. But what... Is there not a role for the Attorney General more broadly with regard to the posture that these carriers have taken with regard to claims management and evaluation?
I think that we can look into that. I'm not... I don't want to give you a definitive answer because I'm not exactly sure. But it's something that we can explore.
All right. Thank you, Senator Martins. Senator Jackson, do you have any questions?
Good afternoon. Thank you. I was curious as to how many cases regarding workers' comp or state insurance fund has come up to the Attorney General's office over the past year or two years since he's been the Attorney General? If you have specific numbers, great. If you have generalities, just to know whether or not this is a major issue that needs to be addressed.
You're talking about our affirmative investigations where workers are complaining, not where we're defending the workers' compensation board, right?
Right. Complaining one way or the other, whether it's the state insurance fund or the workers' compensation board.
So, I'm trying... I don't have the exact number, so we can get that to you. I can say that we are... We currently have one active investigation where the behavior, really, by the employer, I think, was egregious in terms of many injuries discouraging workers from applying for workers' compensation benefits, going after workers who did in retaliation. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we, you know, will have a resolution of this and that we then... That that will encourage other workers to realize that they can come to our office for this. I'm not sure that workers realize that this is something that our office can investigate. But I think it's clear that we do have jurisdiction to do this. And so we would like to encourage workers to come to our office. And we are very interested in pursuing these type of claims. Where the prior question about whether we can investigate the carriers, I'm just not sure that there is actual legislation that permits us to do that. So that's what I wanted to look into. And we'll certainly get back to you about that because there may... We may need to suggest a proposal for that.
Yeah. I understand. But I guess I was more concerned with had... Any cases that have been investigated by the Attorney General's office has concluded? And whether or not, for example, we can say what the allegations were? And what, if any, conclusion? You know, was there a fine where there's criminal prosecution or things like that? To see the range in which the Attorney General's office has been involved with cases that have concluded?
We haven't. This is a new area for us, where we're going, you know, where we are investigating now. And so it's really... I mean, during the four years I have been here, we haven't had any. So I... And I don't think there were any prior.
Okay. And as far as the state insurance fund and/or the workers' compensation board, are you... You, when I say you, the Attorney General's office, are they defending any cases that may be pending where you're representing the workers' compensation board or the state insurance fund? Or are you really representing the constituents out there that are the workers?
We represent the workers' compensation board. We don't represent the insurance fund. But we are statutorily obligated to represent the board. And so that's the... That's when we are in court in the defensive posture. That's our client.
So if, in fact, a plaintiff is a worker, and it's against the workers' compensation board, where you... When I say you, the AG's office, that's you, is representing... What do you take in that position in that particular case? Do you assign someone independent of the AG but is an AG employee, where there's no sharing of information because they're talking about the plaintiff and the Attorney General's office that's defending the workers' compensation board?
We... I haven't... I'm not aware of any cases where a worker was suing the board. So let... So I can check and get back to you on that. The affirmative cases that I'm talking about is where, if we did not resolve it, we would be... We would bring a case against the employer. And so there's no conflict there. But in other cases where it's not that the worker's suing the board, but they're challenging the board decision, we do represent the board.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Casase, for your testimony and your answers today and your service. Very appreciative.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to call up Panel D now. So we have James Parrott, the Director of Economic and Fiscal Policy at the New School. We have Frank Kirbyne. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. The Director of Human Resources at the Business Council of New York State. And Joe Cannavas, the Special Counsel at the New York State AFL-CIO. Well, good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you? All right. Mr. Parrott, I have you up first, so you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, senators. I want to first thank you for holding this hearing in the first place. I can't remember the last time there was an oversight hearing regarding workers' compensation. New York was the first state to adopt workers' compensation and was once a national leader in safeguarding the interest of workers injured on the job. However, worker protections under New York's workers' comp system have eroded over the years as legislative and administrative changes have focused on curtailing benefits rather than minimizing injuries, adequately compensating injured workers, or fostering return to work. Fairly compensating injured workers used to be the guiding principle for workers' compensation. For the last several years, changes have reduced employer costs and boosted insurance company profits. I've submitted lengthy testimony. I'm not going to read through all of that. I want to highlight three points today. One, there's been a very troubling increase in the injury rate in New York State in recent years. Two, benefits that workers' comp claimants receive are faltering. And three, insurance company profits, including those of the state insurance fund, are soaring. Earning a living in New York is steadily and seriously becoming more hazardous. Nearly 200,000 workers are injured annually in New York State. The incidence of workplace injuries and illnesses has increased in New York State over the last three years and was a quarter higher than the national rate in 2022. Nearly three out of every five injuries in New York's private sector that result in lost workdays occur in predominantly low-wage industries or in industries like construction, which hire many low-wage workers. Three New York industries stand out as having become notably more injury-prone in recent years: hospitals, nursing homes, and warehouses. From 2018 to '22, injury incidence rates rose by 2/3 in nursing facilities, and injury incidents doubled in hospitals. From 2017 to '22, as the state's warehouse workforce more than doubled, increasing by 120%, the number of warehouse injuries rose a staggering five-fold. The rapid increase in warehouse injuries has become... Has come in a period when Amazon and other large retailers have opened large facilities in New York where package flow is fast-paced and workers are closely monitored to ensure maximum productivity with little regard for their health and safety. Two, indemnity benefits for those suffering workplace injuries are woefully inadequate, falling far short of lost earnings and imposing an extra hardship on low-wage workers. A number of changes would enhance the degree to which lost wages are replaced by workers' comp disability payments. These changes could include raising the minimum and maximum weekly benefit levels and adjusting the base benefit for expected increase in a worker's earnings potential had they not been injured on the job. Administrative reforms would better ensure that injured workers receive appropriate benefits in a timelier fashion. New York could also raise the workers' comp payment level above the current 2/3 ratio to... 2/3 ratio to workers' average pre-injury rate. While New York increased its minimum weekly benefit amount from $150 to $275 effective this January 1st, the average minimum benefit for New York's five neighboring states was $372, 35% greater than New York's new minimum. Maximum benefits trail... Also, New York's maximum benefits trail most neighboring states, with the average for neighboring states 29% higher than New York's maximum. Various administrative changes after the 2007 legislation substantially added to the number and complexity of claims forms. We've heard a lot about that this morning. Medical reports for healthcare providers and incident reports for employers. This increased complexity has made the system considerably less transparent and harder to access by many low-wage and immigrant workers. Workers' comp board shift away from hearings to the issuance of non-hearing decisions leaves many workers without an opportunity to seek clarity regarding their cases and their rights. Workers experiencing extreme stress in the course of doing their jobs to the point where they need mental health treatment should not be denied assistance through the workers' comp system. There's current legislation, Senate 6635, Assembly 5745, which would ensure that mental health-related workers' comp claims receive appropriate attention. And my third point is that profits have soared for workers' comp insurance companies while payments, too, are on behalf of workers. For indemnity and medical costs have fallen in absolute and relative terms. Data from the National Association of Insurance Commissioners indicate a pronounced shift from workers' indemnity and medical benefits to insurance profits in recent years. The total amount of worker benefits in New York fell nearly a third from 2014 to '21, while insurance profits doubled. Five out of the last six years for data for 2017 to '21, workers' comp profits exceeded $1 billion in New York. Benefits paid, too, were on behalf of injured workers, were only 54% of premiums in 2021, while workers' comp insurance profits absorbed 22% of every premium dollar. And that's not even factoring in the investment earnings that insurance companies receive. For the most recent five years for which data are available, 2017 to '21, the state insurance fund paid out a much higher share of premiums in worker benefits, 64%, than did private workers' comp insurance companies, which paid out only 45% of premiums. Yet, the excess surplus that the state insurance fund has, it's $10 billion. This is not the reserve to pay lost... The future payments for existing claims. This is excess beyond that. They have $10 billion to pay future payments. And on top of that, another $10 billion. This is on the state insurance company side, which pays out, as I just noted, a higher share of their premiums in worker benefits and medical benefits. So you can imagine if you had a comparable reserve on the private insurance company side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrott. Mr. Kirbyne?
Kirbyne. It's good.
Kirbyne.
Yep. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity to address this committee. My name is Frank Kirbyne. I'm the Director of the Center for Human Resources for the Business Council. I welcome the opportunity to convey the sentiments of the more than 3,200 members of the Business Council, businesses of all sizes and across all industries. The 3,200-plus employers are representative of the state's employers who are responsible for fully funding what is the nation's most robust and costly workers' compensation system. A side note on Ms. DeAngelo's testimony is the payers of this system were pretty unhappy with the results that were provided to that injured worker and dissatisfied with what we're paying for in that regard. The grand bargain that is the state's workers' compensation system is something the state's employers are proud to support. And we've been fortunate to be able to negotiate important reforms with the legislature when reforms necessary for its continued success have been required. It's important that New York State employers be leaders in providing worker protections and security. We take very seriously our obligations to our employees in both their physical and financial well-being. While it is important to be a leader in these areas, it's equally important that New York not become an outlier. New York State is in a fierce competition to attract and retain employers, and it's not going well. From the most recent ranking of 49 out of 50 in state business tax climate, according to the Tax Foundation, to the most recent U.S. Census data... to the most recent U.S. Census data showing New York losing nearly 102,000 people in population in a 12-month period ending July 2023, the largest drop both in percent and in raw numbers, indications are that New York State is not doing well in this competition. According to a recent March 2024 survey of upstate New York business leaders by the Santa College Research Institute, 67% of CEOs say business conditions are getting worse in New York State. Given a list of factors and asked to characterize them as an asset or a detriment to doing business in New York, 81% say the policies of New York State government is a detriment to doing business in New York. I hope this committee can be leaders in reversing that perception amongst upstate CEOs. In addition to one of the nation's most expensive workers' compensation system, New York employers face several unique challenges, challenges unique to New York State. We have, as you know, substantial unemployment insurance fund debt, New York State being the only state not to apply American Rescue Fund, American Rescue Plan funds to outstanding unemployment insurance debt incurred during the COVID pandemic. Our nation-leading time-off mandates, from paid sick leave to paid family leave, to being the last state in the nation to provide requiring employers to replace income as a result of COVID exposure. And we have more than 400 employers, mostly small and medium employers, who are facing millions of dollars in settlements for pay frequency issue, according to a wrongly decided appellate court decision saying that late pay for manual workers is wage theft. I'm sure you'll hear from a range of advocates today who wish to expand the class of workers eligible for these benefits, for increasing penalties for employers who don't follow New York State law. By the way, we do not support or defend any employer who violates New York State workers' compensation law or any labor law. But making things illegaler doesn't always seem to solve that problem. Or through dramatic expansion of the Short Term Disability Program, expansion of the nation's most generous paid family leave program. While you consider, we're welcome to discussions about modernizing these benefits, as we should. The $170 maximum benefit for off-the-job disability is antiquated and should be addressed. We hope that there is a cost to each and every one of these changes, a cost borne solely by New York employers, a cost that could put jobs and growth at risk. We hope that we can reverse New York's reputation as a place that is not business-friendly, and we implore you to take all these costs into consideration when working with businesses to improve the business climate reputation, improve worker safety, and reverse this population loss that we're experiencing. Look forward to working with the committee and any of the ideas presented here today.
Mr. Canavas?
Thank you so much. I want to start by thanking the Majority Leader, Angie Sturridge, Senator Ramos, Senator Martins, Senator Jackson, Senator Rhodes, and the other members of the Labor Committee, and also all of your staffs, who put in a remarkable amount of work to make this happen. I work for the New York State AFL-CIO, I'm Special Counsel. The New York State AFL-CIO is a federation of about 3,000 unions from across the state. We represent unions in every sector, every corner of the state. They do, our members, or our affiliates' members, do every type of work you can imagine. It includes the public sector and the private sector and the building trades. As you can imagine, workers' compensation is pretty important to our affiliates and their members. Before I get into the substance of my remarks, I do want to acknowledge the members of CSEA, PEF, and OMC who work over at the Workers' Compensation Board and the New York State Insurance Fund, which is the only unionized workers' compensation insurance provider here in New York. They do great work, and we appreciate the work that they do, but there are some issues with the administration of the workers' compensation system. New York State has one of, if not the, most protective workers' compensation statutes in the country. However, it has suffered from about a generation of misapplication. And part of the frustration here is we talk about, constantly talk about legislation, right? You're the legislature. So many problems that we see in the workers' comp system really don't require legislation. They require, you know, a partner and, you know, a faithful administrator to, you know, to administrate and execute and enforce the law that exists. I do want to acknowledge the progress that's been made in the past two years, both at the Workers' Compensation Board and at the State Insurance Fund. Newly empowered leadership and staff changes at the Workers' Comp Board and new leadership at the State Insurance Fund certainly has, we've made some progress. Chair Rodriguez mentioned earlier rebuilding and revitalizing the relationships and building trust, and that really did resonate. I do want to take an opportunity to talk about a few specific issues. One of them is the mental health and extreme stress issue. It is an issue that we are hearing from more and more from our affiliates, and we're hearing from it at all levels. We're hearing from individual workers, we're hearing from shop stewards, we're hearing from union reps, and we're hearing from principals, principal officers at unions. This is an issue that is vitally important to our affiliates and their members. And the way that the law is now, right? There's a board created defense that basically says that if you encounter, and this is for, to be clear, this is for claims not associated with a physical, a mental health claim that is not also associated with a physical injury, right? The standard there is, you know, the stress must have been greater than is normal for the workplace, right? So greater than what you should have expected when you went to work. It's an absolutely antiquated and regressive defense that the board, just last month, voted to uphold by voting to appeal those third department decisions that you mentioned, Senator Ramos. If you put that same standard on maybe a carpenter, swings a hammer all day and hits their thumb instead of the nail, right? Well, a carpenter should expect to occasionally hit their thumb with a nail, so now, you know, if you apply that same defense, that same reasoning, because, you know, hitting your thumb with a hammer is something that you should have expected to happen at work, you shouldn't be compensated. It is absolute anathema. That's not how the workers' comp system works, and it's not how it should work. It's not how it's designed to work. And, you know, the board had an opportunity to revisit, you know, their approach to these cases, and instead of walking through the door, seems to have slammed it shut. We appreciate the Senate passing your bill, and we hope to continue to make progress on this issue. COVID-19, there's been a lot of talk about COVID-19 claims. We must do all that we can to address long COVID to ensure that workers who contracted COVID at work get the benefits that they are entitled to under the system, but also to make sure that survivors receive the benefits that they are entitled to. We have a lot of untimely claims, and, you know, I wanted to make the point about these untimely claims. One of the questions earlier was, how many claims have been denied? I think that, for me, I don't know that that's going to get to the real answer because how many people are out there who are not even filing because they're already beyond the deadline? We should be doing all that we can to encourage people to file. You know, the New York State AFL-CIO, along with our affiliates, during COVID, made a big push, we had a public campaign to get workers to file, to get survivors to file. Organizationally, we experienced this after 9/11. We are still dealing with 9/11 claims where survivors and injured workers are having difficulty proving their claims. This is now beyond 20 years ago. So we had that experience and worked off of that and encouraged folks to file for COVID claims, but that is vitally important. And there is also a mental health aspect here, too, right? How many folks, or a similar dynamic? How many folks aren't filing these mental health claims because they go to an attorney, who we work hand-in-hand with, but the attorney says, you know, this claim is not going to be a valid claim, right? Or they know how difficult these mental health claims are. So I think that that's something that you should keep in mind as well. Not only how many claims are being denied, but how many claims aren't even being filed? And that applies for COVID and for the mental health claims. And then, just one moment on premium fraud. It is a huge problem for us and for our affiliates, but also for their employers. Their employers are not committing these types of fraud by and large. They are from non-union employers, many in the construction industry. They are gaming the system to gain yet another competitive advantage over our unionized employers, and it's something that is vitally important to us. And I've gone beyond my time, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, gentlemen. Mr. Parrott, you are probably, you know, one of the most respected economists in New York State right now. And I want to ask if it is your opinion, if you share Mr. Kirbyne's opinion, that economic growth is only possible at the expense of worker safety?
I don't know that he said that, but I certainly don't agree with that.
It was implied, I felt. It's what I inferred.
Okay. It certainly doesn't have to come at the expense of worker safety. And what's happening here, I think, is that while New York State's workers' comp premiums that employers pay are not the highest in the country, they're not the lowest either, but the surplus, the profits, you know, workers' comp, if you go back to Francis Perkins, was intended as an insurance form that would be a loss leader for insurance companies. They would provide workers' comp basically at cost without making a profit on it to companies, and then sell them fire insurance and liability insurance and other forms of insurance. Now, it has become tremendously profitable in New York State, and that shouldn't be. And the state insurance fund is sharing in those profits. So we could do a lot to, a lot of what you've heard today is the need for, you know, addressing the complexity of the process, expediting claims, hearings, and, you know, have those be in person so that the claimants understand what's going on, and so. So there are a lot of administrative changes that could be done. You could also go a long way toward improving benefits without necessarily raising premiums because of these excess profits that exist in the system.
Thank you for your answer, Mr. Parrott. I'm actually very frustrated with the Business Council precisely because they often lobby against my bills to streamline the system. And so I was heartened, actually, to see that the Business Council seems to believe, or is unhappy, that Ms. DeAngelo had the results and the experience that she did. So I'm wondering where the connection is between those two.
Well, we don't mean, it's nothing personal, lobby against your bills. You know, we want a system--
I don't think it's personal against me, I do think it's personal against workers, particularly low-wage workers.
We've agreed to this bargain, we want a system that works effectively. We want to make sure it's done in a way that, you know, injured workers are properly compensated and cared for. I'm a human resource guy, not a fancy lawyer like Joe, but I've been the guy they've had to come to with their injuries sometimes, and I've seen people who had back injuries who can't pick up their children anymore and seen the heartbreak in that. No one should be hurt at work, getting hurt at work is a crime, in air quotes. We want a system that makes New York competitive in this national competition for business and jobs and population. We want a system that compensates employees quickly and adequately and fairly. We want a workers' compensation board that works effectively and efficiently. As a sidebar, I want to say positive things about Chair Rodriguez, Steve Scotty, and Heather McMaster. They've been great at working with the Business Council in the last few years and getting the word out so we can communicate to our members, employer, what their rights are and what they need to communicate to their employees. So we're getting that, we're working on it.
I actually wanted to ask you, Mr. Kirbyne, what it is that the Business Council does in order to ensure that their members are proactively mitigating these worker injuries?
Sure, we've had the Comp Board's employer advocate do webinars for us. We've had the staff, that's how I know Steve and Heather so well, is we've had them do webinars for us in outreach to our membership and in publications to our membership to let them know this is what we need to do to get workers healthy, paid, and back to work, which is our priority. We want them to be treated and returned to work.
Does the Business Council play any role in helping set rates?
I have a seat on the NYSER board, New York Comp Insurance Rating Board, as does Joe.
What has that experience been from your perspective?
I'm not an actuary either, and actuarially, it's difficult for an HR guy. But it's been enlightening to see the process and how rates are set, and--
What do you do there in order to make sure that employers have a fair rate?
The board has a methodology it uses to determine the loss cost ratio each year, comparing premiums collected versus claims paid. They apply this methodology, and they come up with the next year's loss cost ratio to adjust insurance premiums accordingly.
So then what do you say about the increased injury rates? Because we're seeing these injury rates skyrocket.
Yeah, no question, we're seeing, what I hope is an anomaly in this in terms of injuries increasing over the last few years, especially during COVID. But we have to, you know, you can pick any time period and find the number you want. Since 1970, when the Occupational Safety and Health Act passed, we had 38 deaths a day on the job, we're down to 15, way too many, obviously, nationwide. We had the incidence of 10.9 injuries per 100 employees in 1970. We're down to 2.7 injuries per 100 employees today. So if you look at a longer trend, the trend is positive. And even at the NYSER board, we're seeing a positive trend. Now, we're seeing clearly an anomaly over the last few years. But we live in strange times since COVID pandemic hit, and I think we're adjusting--
Actually, the spike in Amazon injury rates specifically predates the pandemic.
I throw pandemic out as 2020 number. Let's look at a longer period of time to try to get a trend in terms of how employers are doing, reducing deaths and injuries in the workplace. And I think the record's pretty good since 1970, when the law was passed.
Yes, that's very subjective. Mr. Canavas, I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about your observations in how the workers' comp might, the workers' comp system might vary from private-sector worker to public-sector worker?
Sure, thank you. I would like to address the fancy lawyer comment. I'm a proud lawyer. I've spent my entire career, from the time I was an intern in law school to today advocating on behalf of workers and their unions. So I'm really proud of my advocacy and my profession. You know, the difference between public sector and private sector from the injured worker's perspective is largely the same. There's not two separate, you know, case tracks of the Workers' Compensation Board. There are a handful of public-sector workers that are not covered by comp, but they're covered by different statutory and contractual workplace injury benefits. By and large, it's similar. I don't have any data to give you that would shed any light on outcomes or, you know, workers' experiences. One big difference from the employer perspective is that, by and large, public-sector employers are self-insured, right? There are some usually large private-sector employers who are also self-insured, but there's much more prevalence of, you know, private-sector employers purchasing policies and, you know, paying premiums. And I appreciate your questions about, you know, premiums and rate-setting. In addition to myself and Mr. Kirbyne, DFS, the Workers' Comp Board, and CIF all have seats on the NYSER board. And one of my continual frustrations there, you know, has been borne out in the data that Mr. Parrott mentioned earlier. Premiums are too high. They're entirely too high when you compare to losses. And, you know, we have, you know, the actuaries, I'm not one of those, but I try to hold my own. You know, they have a term they call claim severity, right? So claim severity is going down, right? And claim severity just means what they pay out on the claim. That doesn't mean that the injured worker is any less severely hurt, it's just what they're paying. And interestingly, as claim severity is going down, the amount of money that the insurance companies are paying for defense attorneys, private investigators, and other loss adjustment expenses has been going up. And these loss adjustment expenses are treated as losses, right? So they get piled right into the loss cost filing, even though they're expenses. The carriers are choosing to incur these expenses. They are not losses. So there's some decisions going on here. They're prioritizing, you know, fighting these claims as opposed to paying them out. I mean, that's what I get from the data that we've seen over the last few years.
Thank you for your answers. Mr. Martins?
Thank you.
Senator Martins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Look, I think we would agree that if we were building a workers' comp system today, it wouldn't look like this, that we would build it separately. And I happen to believe that there are employers that are paying into a system to want to see their employees taken care of, and we have a system that prioritizes and should prioritize getting employees well and back into the workforce. But something's gone wrong along the way. You know, we can talk about Experience Mod and whether or not those Experience Mods should actually be applied that way, and we can come back to that in a second. But we have a system that's flawed. It's broken, and obviously, it's not working. We have employers, you know, and again, when I speak of employers, I'm talking about the vast majority of employers in this state that are small, mom-and-pop, local businesses that employ less than a dozen employees and that are just trying to make ends meet. And every time their workers' comp payments go up, that is one more expense that they have in terms of meeting the bottom line. And to see a system that, you know, has become, you know, just one more expense on small businesses without seeing the result on the other side benefiting the employees and the mission of workers' compensation is frustrating. And I think that's what you're hearing here today. I do believe that employers are doing the right thing, for the most part. We spoke about fraud before and the need to hold them accountable. I also believe that the employees deserve better. And yet, we have a group out there that has $10 billion in reserves, which is incredibly troubling in a system that should have a certain level of oversight. So let me ask, and I'll start with you, Mr. Kirbine. How would you amend the system? You know, understanding you're coming from at this from a business perspective, large and small, but, you know, I believe that wants to have employees taken care of in a better way with better results and quicker return to employment and to health, what would you do?
You know, I think you hit the nail on the head. We probably wouldn't design the system this way if we were building it today. So maybe it's a systemic approach. You know, the 2017 negotiations and reforms were key, and I think the cooperation between the business community and the legislature then was really something to be proud of. Maybe it's that type of, you know, Manhattan-type project with the legislature, the business community, with the insurance providers, with all the stakeholders, the medical community, to try to develop a system that works for all parties. Piecemeal attempts here and there, you know, seem to, it almost, the reactionary result is, you know, one stakeholder is not happy with it, so they're going to oppose it, and we spin our wheels and we're in this system again. It seems like for the $10 billion or so that employers spend on this system, we should get the results that you outlined there. So maybe it is a new reorganization, I hate to say blue-ribbon commission, but something like that to review the system from nuts to bolts, from bottom to top, involving all the stakeholders to see what we come up with.
Thank you. Mr. Canavas, if we had to sort of rearrange the system, specifically the workers' compensation board as an instrument in order to be able to process these items and these claims more quickly, are there thoughts you have as to how we should, you know, incentivize or prioritize making that system more efficient in ways that you think we should?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I hope I don't knock you off your chair with my answer. The workers' comp system, at the very beginning, was the worker and the employer, and we really have to refocus on that. And, you know, we have a system now that prioritizes the industrial complex, right? The carrier, the, and some of these, I hope nobody hits me with a tomato, the TPAs, the vendors, the, all of the other folks in the system. But getting back to the employer and the worker, I think, is really, you know, at heart here, right? We talk about what it costs employers, right? And I told you earlier, we're very sensitive to that. It costs every year billions more than it should, and it is still producing these unacceptable results. I think that taking some of those other considerations out of the, you know, out of the system, you know, we can't run a system without them, but we can't prioritize their interests over the injured worker. That's very basic. You know, taking some of that influence out of the system, and then also getting back to, you know, like what the, you know, the old timers told me what the system was like 50 years ago, right? You get to the door--
That wasn't that long ago.
--and you're safe, right? The injured worker gets to the door, and they get everything that they're entitled to, right? I think about the workers' comp system or workers' comp, an individual claim, as an empty box, right? The worker has that empty box. They are entitled to fill that up. The statute says, this is the size of your box, and whatever your box includes, indemnity payments, medical, mental health care, too many injured workers don't even fill that box halfway, right? They don't get the indemnity benefits they need. They don't get the care that they need. And, you know, refocusing the system on, you know, also providing that protection from liability for the employers, right? That's an aspect of the grand bargain that we don't really talk about often enough.
Both sides.
That's it. Just, again, prioritizing the injured worker and the employer.
And I think you hit it on the head. We should, and need to consider workers' comp benefits for the employee as part of their salary structure. They're entitled to it. They earned it. It's not just something you give them after the fact. It's theirs, and they should have the opportunity to fill that box in the way that they need in order to get better. And I think that is part of the bargain that we discussed. But you may have noticed, in the beginning, I talked about employers and employees specifically and removed everything else, because I do agree with you. We have to go back to those basics. Mr. Parrott, great to see you again. The chair identified you as one of the most well-respected economists in New York State. I would agree, certainly. Good to see you here. Your thoughts?
What my colleagues have said, I think it certainly goes in the right direction. I think in New York State, you know, I hark back to the first numbers I raised, about 200,000 workers being injured a year, the injury rate going up. Some of it may be related to the upheaval from COVID and its aftermath and so on. I think a lot of it is related to a couple of the industries that I mentioned, hospitals, nursing homes, and warehouses. Warehouse certainly started before COVID. It was accelerated because of the economic change that COVID wrought, but the business model was there before. That's the source of the problem.
Sure.
New York State needs to focus on, number one, how we can reduce and prevent injuries. There's a bill this year, I didn't have, you know, I've mentioned in my testimony, I didn't do it in the oral part today, that would focus on the warehouse industry and call for more, you know, contribution, responsibility from employers, require worker health and safety committees and so on. So things like that are needed. I think there's already been some movement in the last couple of years in the hospital and nursing home sector with safe staffing regulations and so on, which are part of the problem. Number one, we need to bring down the injury rate. Number two, we need to focus on making sure that people get the health care they need, that they get the wage replacement that they're entitled to, as you've been saying, and that they get back to work as soon as possible. There hasn't been enough focus on that either. So we have a system that's awash in surplus and profits, and it's ignoring the two key problems, taking care of the workers and preventing injuries in the first place.
Of the groups that we've discussed so far today, who is best positioned in that industry to actually provide some reforms from within? I understand that some of it will require legislative intervention, but there should be some level of control within the different groups we discussed today that should be able to pull the reins and say, we're going to head in this direction. Who's that?
I've been a rank-and-file worker before. Certainly, workers know best. They know the job. They know the company they work for. They know what the boss needs. They're in the best position to organize production in a safe way to get it done. So workers need to be at the center of that discussion, working with employers, of course. But workers are an indispensable part of that.
The whole system's built around that very premise. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Martins. Senator Jackson, do you have any questions?
Sure. I'd first thank you all for coming in and giving testimony. And I'm just looking at the minimum weekly workers' compensation benefits in the states around New York State. And New York State is $275, and Connecticut, $315, $359, and I'm going down the list from Connecticut, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, da-da-da-da-da. And then looking at the maximum weekly workers' compensation benefits in New York State, $1,171 as of July 1, 2024. That's not even in place right now, then. Whereas Connecticut is already at, or as of that date, $1,500, give or take, and Massachusetts, $17, almost $1,800. New Jersey, $1,131, which basically is, you know, right there with New York State. Pennsylvania, and Vermont, all of these states around us are paying more than basically New York State. And who's stopping us from paying the more? Who is stopping us? Who's in the way?
I think the legislature has to look into that further and understand why that's the case. And hopefully, the Workers' Comp Board will be able to contribute some answers along the way.
Well, in my opinion, based on what I've heard so far today, it's going to have to be up to advocates and progressives in the state legislature, along with some of my colleagues on the other side, in order to make it work for New York State.
I think you're absolutely right.
Because right now, we're like at the bottom of a regional area as far as workers' compensation.
Well, this is not the only issue, right?
I understand that.
We've heard about, you know, $170 maximum for temporary disability insurance, a chronically underfunded unemployment insurance system, minimum wage where we're now falling behind many other states and so on. There are many areas regarding the well-being of workers where New York is no longer a leader, and I don't think there's been enough focus. It's great to have this hearing to, you know, to shine a spotlight on workers' comp because reform is long, long overdue. Once you get that fixed, you know, there's no, there's a long line of other things that need attention as well.
Without a doubt. And I think that that's what we have to do, is be able to work for the people of New York State together in order to improve their health, their welfare, their benefits, everything that they're entitled to. So thank you for coming. We have a lot of work to be done.
Thank you, Uncle Bob. I have a few thoughts that I wanted to share, you know, because we keep bringing up warehouses, and we've pointed out how injury rates were high even prior to the pandemic. But not only is that true, we actually saw warehouse worker injuries dip during the pandemic. And that was largely because Amazon had suspended its productivity quotas when we saw, as we saw those injuries dip. And that's, I think, very important information that informs our actions here in the legislature. And in general, I've been a very big advocate for open data. I confess, I've been frustrated with the answers from both the Workers' Compensation Board and NYSIF when it comes to the lack of open-source data that is available to us. Mr. Parrott, your job is to analyze those and other numbers in order to determine the health of our economy and where we can improve. I know you've been looking at the Workers' Compensation Board and NYSIF for some time now. What type of data from them would be helpful to you in order to properly analyze the gaps in the system?
Well, you could start with just what the number of claims are and why claims are denied, you know, because I have been around a long time. I can remember when you used to be able to go on the Workers' Comp Board, and you can find the number of claims, the number of, you know, the claims that were, that resulted in a first payment and so on. I challenge anybody to find that on the Workers' Comp Board today. It should not be hard to find. It's public information. Public needs to know. In order for the public and workers to understand what's going on in the workers' comp system, basic information needs to be readily available. What's the point of hiding that from the people?
My follow-up question to you was going to be exactly that, if you had any notion as to why they would want to suppress those numbers from the public.
I have no, I can't answer that because it's beyond me why they would want to make people foil for the information that should be there.
Mr. Fischbein, sorry, Mr. Kirbine, would those numbers be helpful to you?
I'm old enough to remember those, too, and used to reference those frequently. You know, we would try to do studies at various employers as to injury rates and how we compared to peers and groups, and, you know, are we, how can we improve? Where do we stand? I remember looking those up. I think they'd be very helpful.
And Mr. Canavas, would that type of information be helpful to you? I mean, I imagine that you guys also have a lot of data that comes through your unions, the unions that you represent, but I imagine you also analyze the injury rates of non-union workers.
Absolutely. And in addition to, you know, Workers' Comp Board, right, you mentioned CIF earlier, I think that it is important to remember that CIF competes with private carriers. So if you're going to look at, you know, heightened transparency for CIF, whatever you do for CIF, you should do for the private carriers as well.
All right. Well, thank you.
Touche.
Mr. -- Senator Martins?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have thoughts?
I sure do, and thank you for that message received, and certainly makes sense, obviously. If we're going to have a player, a significant player in the process provide data, everyone has to provide that same data in order for us to have a broader view. But I'll ask you a, you know, I'll ask everyone. Why a Workers' Comp Board? You know, we talked about the history of the Workers' Comp Board. It was created as a board over 100 years ago, you know, and that structure of a board and all of this, these ALJs and the like, is that something that we should be looking at? Is there a better structure that would create greater accountability and a better process rather than just taking for granted that a board is a better way to deal with a quarter of a million claims that are resolved annually with the number of issues that we've identified today? Could that be part of the issue that we need to discuss? Who wants to go first?
I've got it. So, you know, our legislative process, our policymaking process is a result of working very closely with our affiliates. Honestly, I hadn't even fathomed that you would be considering such a wholesale change. I don't have the authority to, you know, to give an opinion on it. You know, it would be the wrong thing to do. We're guided by our affiliates, and we would have to talk to them about this, especially considering it really is a sea change, if you will.
Just throwing a grenade onto the table and asking who's--
My members might not like it either, but I'll throw out an opinion. I guess claims are just act claims, right, and have to be adjudicated somehow by somebody. What that entity is and how it's, you know, structured, how it goes is, that's part of the, you know, design-from-the-ground-up scenario we discussed earlier. But, you know, not all claims are as what they appear. We want to make sure that claims are justly paid.
I don't have any members, so I--
You don't have to go back and check with anyone?
You know, for the record, though, I never feel like I've leashed in the first place anyway, so, as you can probably tell. I think there's probably a lot of value in having employer and business representatives on something like a Workers' Comp Board. I mean, I could, hopefully, there'd be a lot of administrative streamlining and improvements and modernization, and the procedures would be changed to move things through. But it might also be very valuable to have some public health experts and occupational health experts on the board, and people from the medical community who are committed to advocating for changes so that the medical community better serves-- advocating for changes so that the medical, medical community better serves injured workers. I don't know that that perspective is represented on the board at this point.
So, I think that, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about this, right, like having, having the medical community represented anywhere on the Workers' Comp Board or occupational safety and health physicians anywhere on the board, I think that we have to go back to the recruitment and retention issues. You know, I, I don't know that the board is able to, well, I know that statutorily, right, the commissioner salaries are set, right? But I don't know that they, they're able to pay high enough salaries to recruit, you know, MDs or, you know, occupational health experts. And it's a, it's a consideration that you have to keep in mind.
My understanding is they haven't requested the ability to increase pay.
Well, you know, some of the pay over there is statutorily set, some of it is not. You talked about the, the civil service review earlier. I think it's also important to note that the board is not pay, not funded by taxpayer dollars. It's funded by an assessment on employers, which, which was significantly reduced this year, right? So, you know, these are all things that you should keep in mind when you're considering reimagining or even just tweaking the Workers' Comp Board.
It's going to be paid for somehow, but the entire system, I think we're hearing, isn't working or functioning properly. And everyone agrees. Employers, employees, esteemed economists. And so, the idea of us reevaluating that, I think, also has to include looking at the entire system and not just dealing with it, you know, one piece at a time. It's certainly, I think, a valid question and something we should look at. But I appreciate all of your testimony. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming today. All right. We are going to take a brief 15-minute recess before we begin with Panel E and then conclude with Panel F. So, we will be back here, let's be back here at 1:30. If that's okay. Might as well. Well, good afternoon to everyone who has made it this far. We are going to start Panel E now. And today, we're joined by Lewis Dower from the Workers' Compensation Alliance and Sharon McLennan Weir from the Center for Independence of the Disabled. She's the executive director. We're also joined by Mariah Engelberg, an organizer at A Better Balance, and Suzanne Rupa, who is an injured worker. Thank you all for being here. And we, are you, are we ready to start the clock? All right. Well, Lewis, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Senator Ramos. I appreciate the honor of testifying at this committee's hearing. My name is Lewis Dower. I've been representing injured workers for nearly 30 years with the firm of Womack Goldstein and Andrews. I'm also former president of the Injured Workers' Bar Association and former co-chair of the Workers' Compensation Alliance. The practice before the Workers' Compensation Board has changed quite a bit since I started. Due to time constraints, I'm going to be focusing on issues that impact injured workers. And please don't construe the negative tenor of my testimony to mean there's nothing good to say about the system. As a young lawyer, I learned two fundamental tenets. First, the workers' compensation law is to be liberally construed to accomplish the humanitarian purpose of the act. And second, the workers' compensation law is framed to avoid technicalities and the requirements of precise pleading. Unfortunately, over the last several decades, we've witnessed an erosion of these principles. Behind each case number is an injured worker, likely with a family, dependent on their income. And I would ask the committee consider the gut punch felt by the injured worker when their doctor tells them or they realize that they can no longer return to their job, that their career and to some extent, the life as they knew it is over. And I just want to interject that Ms. DeAngelo's testimony is not an outlier. That happens over and over and over again. Fundamentally, I explain to my clients that the law provides workers with two things, a portion of their lost wages and medical treatment that they will require due to their injury. In the brief time I have, I would like to address issues relating to medical treatment and the Section 35 hardship provision. In 2007, the legislature directed the board in Section 13A 5 to develop a list of pre-authorized procedures, which was supposed to be beyond that $1,000 limit, with the intention of expediting treatment to hasten the injured worker's return to work. Because the longer somebody is out of work, the less likely they are to return to work. Before 2007, any treatment costing less than, it was actually $500, did not require prior authorization. In 2000, but then it was raised to $1,000 in 2007. In 2010, the Workers' Compensation Board adopted the medical treatment guidelines, this list of pre-authorized procedures, along with pages and pages of rules and regulations, which delay treatment by pre-denying all treatment that is not contained within the guidelines, even if it costs less than $1,000. One of the largest frustrations I see among my clients centers around delays experienced in obtaining treatment and medications. Even with the new PAR portal, injured workers must wait months before getting a determination either from the medical director's office or a law judge. They want to get treatment quickly to speed up their recovery in the hopes of returning to work. And for those who can't return to work, they just wish to simply feel better. Due to complexities of the system, many doctors no longer accept workers' compensation patients. And due to difficulties and delays, many providers and workers decide to bill privately, shifting the cost to private health carriers. The board's decision to require out-of-state doctors to follow the medical treatment guidelines and utilize the portal has resulted in the termination of care for many workers who have moved out of, moved out of state because they're unable to find doctors willing to participate in New York's system. Now, turning to the safety net. In 2007, Section 35 was written as part of the reform legislation to create a safety net for the more severely injured workers impacted by the caps on permanent partial disability benefits. This section created a return-to-work task force, preserved an injured worker's right to claim total industrial disability, established a right for injured workers with a greater than 75% loss of wage-earning capacity to apply for an extreme hardship redetermination, and directed the board to issue an annual safety net report. Unfortunately, this provision as interpreted by the board has not accomplished the goals as set forth by the legislature. The return-to-work task force made recommendations that were never adopted. New York's injured workers have no right, following an injury, to return to work light duty, nor any job protection under the workers' compensation law. Thus, creating the paradox where workers who take time off under the Paid Family Leave Act to care for an, a sick or ill family member have job protection, but those who are forced out of work due to an on-the-job injury do not. The board's interpretation of Section 35.3, which is the extreme hardship redetermination, has been so strict that, as far as we know, fewer than 30 applications for this have been approved since the provision was enacted. The precise number of the approval should be contained in the annual safety net report, but I'll get into that in a minute. Applications under this provision likely began in 2018 or 19. In calculating this redetermination, the board looks at all household income and has denied benefits in many cases, even though the injured workers demonstrate that they cannot make ends meet once their permanent partial disability benefits have expired. And I am compelled to ask, what good is a safety net that doesn't catch anybody? Finally, the annual safety net reporting as required under Subdivision 4 remains a mystery. For several years after this provision was enacted, the board published the safety net report on its website. Currently, neither the early nor recent annual safety net reports are visible anywhere on the board's website, and this lack of transparency is troubling. And I ask the legislature to close the holes in the Section 35 safety net so that it benefits more of New York's injured workers. Now, it's easy to point out problems or deficiencies in the system. Over the years, the board has taken great strides with the adoption of the electronic case folder, its handling of the self-insurance crisis, as well as the use of virtual hearings during COVID. However, more can and should be done to help New Yorkers. I would like to see a greater focus on the injured worker. The grand bargain eliminated the employee's right to sue their employer in exchange for a system of lost wage benefits and treatment for their injuries. Over the last several decades, a system of rules, regulations, processes, and procedures have been put in place which delay workers' access to those benefits. The current focus by the board on form over substance undermines the core mission of, of the statute to protect and adjudicate the rights of the parties. Finally, I ask that you please listen to the injured workers who are here today and read the written testimonies submitted by those workers from around the state and hear what they have to say, as they're the reason why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLennan Weir?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Senator Ramos and other senators, for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Sharon McLennan Weir, and I'm the executive director for the Center for Independence of the Disabled, New York, Sydney. I'm an advocate for people with disabilities, and I'm also an injured worker. I am hoping that my personal story today will give insight to the needs of workers and how we must try to change regulations for people with disabilities. On September 10, 2015, I was working for the office, the New York State Office of Children's Service, Children and Family Services Commission for the Blind as a district manager in Harlem. I was on my way to a meeting from 125th Street to our maiden lane office. I got off the train at the Wall Street Station. Along the strip of the train tracks, there is something that's called tactile dome stripping. This will allow people who are blind and visually impaired detect when they're near the edge of the platform. I am a totally blind person, and I've been, had, experienced my visual loss since the age of six, and now I'm 53 years old. On that day, the tactile dome stripping that was along the platform was worn down. It was not the correct 1-inch yellow tactile strip that should be along all platforms throughout the New York City subway system. This resulted me in falling into the subway track on the southbound side of the Number Two train. It was during rush hour, 9:00, 9:00 or 9:30, and I was lying there with injuries, screaming to death, hoping that someone would save my life before the train came and killed me. Luckily, two gentlemen were on their way to work, and they took the time to jump in and say, "Are you okay?" I said, "I'm having pain in my back," and they said they have to move me because they know the train was coming. They did do that. I sustained many injuries to my neck, back, hips, and of course, my mind. Anyone that falls onto a subway track in the midst of rush hour worrying about if someone is going to save them or not when a train is coming will suffer post-traumatic stress disorder. I have been living with that ever since. I think about one day, one meeting, if I just did not go, my life would be so different. I am here to advocate for those individuals that have mental health disorders, to let you know that no treatment can really make you whole. I live with the fact that I can't travel by myself anymore. Yes, you may think that's crazy because I'm a totally blind person, but I was used to rock down the streets. I used to be able to cross streets, take the subway, navigate throughout all of the five boroughs independently with no one. And for those of, for those who know me and know my family, know me and my family, they would tell you how different I am and how I can't travel. And there's no treatment, no amount of money, that can change that. Having post-traumatic stress disorder is a constant thing. You worry about how you're going to get to work. Are you going to have a panic attack on the train? Are you going to get there safely? I have to have my husband put me on the train every, when I have to go to Manhattan, and someone meet me at the other end just so I can go to work, because I value work. And I know as a disabled professional, it's important for me to work because I'm doing the God's work of advocating for people with disabilities. It's not true that we don't want to work. It's not true that we just want to collect a check. Some of us, that may be the case, but most of us, it's not. And I have to tell you that, looking at it from both sides, being someone who has been a professional, working all her life, and having to sustain an injury that has changed me in ways that I cannot even tell you, it's heartbreaking. The physical pain and the psychological pain that I live with each and every day is tremendous. So let me talk about why I'm here, about workers' compensation. So, the one thing that keeps me going and have kept me going for the last, I don't know, it's been nine years now, right? Is that I work with a wonderful psychologist named Dr. Gabrielle Stutman. And I've been working with her since November of 2015. In early January of this year, she informed me that she has not been paid for the entire year of 2023. So, workers' compensation has stopped paying her since December of 2022. So now, I have a nice, large bill to pay her. And I'm here to say that it's totally unfair. I have gone to every IME, which is like a, a medical review. I have received no documentation that says why this, my psychologist cannot be paid. She has not received reasons why claims are not being paid. And it has really interrupted our treatment. The stress of knowing about how much it is and how she's going to get paid, and for me to take time to call and call and try to find a lawyer to help me is horrendous. And I'm a professional. I'm a PhD-level psychologist myself. I run a nonprofit for people with disabilities. I am seen as the expert to go to to help people with disabilities achieve what they need to achieve. Yet, I am, I find myself in this situation where I was supposed to receive a benefit that is life-changing for me to have this benefit, and yet, I don't have the benefit. Subsequently, last month, we had to terminate service because of the bill. And I'm going to do my best to find, to make sure that workers' compensation pays her. So, trying to find another psychologist is really difficult. The reimbursement rates for psychologists, as well as medical providers, are really low. People don't want to take it. So, for those of us that have work-related injuries that are mental health issues, we find it so arduous to even find a provider. Also, we want to see, I would like to see that psychologists are culturally competent to work with people with disabilities. Because it is a life-changing situation to be able-bodied and then to acquire disability. As you heard from your previous Ms. DeAngelo's testimony, a lot of what she's saying is a psychological trauma of the aspect of disability. And people need to understand that, because that is something that is not going to go away. It is not something that you can recover from. You need to learn how to, to deal with it, and you need help to do that. Also, we would like to see some, at least I would like to see some changes regarding, why do I have to find a lawyer to get someone to pay a bill? I should be entitled to my service. I worked for the state of New York, and I didn't get fully covered. So, it's, it's very disturbing to see that it doesn't matter what the worker is, you have to fight, fight, fight. And I'm sure you know that for the disabled community that is faced with a workers' compensation claim, a lot of them are low-level, low-level, low-paid employees. So, at times, they would not want to admit that they have a work-related injury because they need every dollar to survive. Sometimes it's about life or death. Sometimes it's about living in the street or not. How do you pay your rent? So, I just want to highlight, I have other suggestions in my testimony, but I just wanted you to understand, as a professional, as an advocate, as an injured worker that continues to struggle, that there must be some sort of change through this system, especially for those of us that have invisible disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Engelberg.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mariah Engelberg, and I'm an organizer with A Better Balance. We are a national legal services and advocacy organization headquartered here in New York. We lead advocacy efforts to pass groundbreaking protections in New York State, including paid family leave and paid sick time. We also run a free legal helpline through which we have heard from hundreds of New Yorkers who need a robust paid medical leave program. I'm here to urge you today to pass Senate Bill S2821B, which provides desperately needed reforms of TDI as well as PFL program. Each of these reforms are included in the Senate Bill S2821B sponsored by Senator Ramos. I will focus on three key reforms. First, New Yorkers need a paid medical leave they can survive on. Currently, New Yorkers who need to take time off of work to recover from cancer, a serious surgery, or any other person... or any other personal health need can receive a maximum of $170 a week. $170. This cap was set back in 1989 and has not budged since. In 2024, it is simply an unlivable amount of money for a family to survive on anywhere in New York. On our helpline, we hear from workers who become food insecure or even homeless while on TDI. One worker recently told us, "I can barely afford to grocery shop with $170." $170 isn't even a month's rent. I'd need to be paid TDI for seven weeks just to cover one month's rent. This isn't a realistic benefit. Countless callers to our helpline forego much-needed medical treatment because it is simply impossible to pay rent, bills, and groceries on TDI. It doesn't have to be this way. All our peer states pay at least five times more than us. Most provide weekly benefits well over $1,000. Indeed, our own paid family leave program, which can be used to care for a seriously ill loved one, pays out at over $1,000 per week. That means if you break your leg and your spouse needs time off to care for you, they will receive far more money than you will yourself. New Yorkers have been struggling on $170 a week since 1989. They cannot struggle a day longer, nor should they have to. As under the Ramos-Silage Bill, these reforms must take place immediately, January 1st, 2026, and cover the entire TDI period. Second, New Yorkers need a progressive wage replacement rate. In addition to capping all TDI benefits at $170 a week under current law, workers only get a certain percentage of their wages in benefits in both the TDI and PFL programs. TDI pays out at only 50% of an employee's wages. The minimum wage is set with the recognition that the minimum wage is the lowest amount that a worker can find livable. With a 50% wage replacement rate, a low-wage worker earning $15 an hour would get no more than $300 per week in benefits. A progressive wage replacement rate, such as that contained in the Ramos-Silage Bill, will allow all workers to receive 90% of their wages up to a certain point, and then 67% of their wages after that point, up to a total cap. This means of benefit determination would make a profound difference in the lives of New Yorkers, especially those already living paycheck to paycheck. And nearly all paid family and medical leave programs around the country use this method of determining benefits, recognizing that affordability of the benefit is the only way workers will be able to take it. Third, New Yorkers need paid medical leave that is job-protected and requires continued health insurance. Currently, TDI doesn't require employers to hold a worker's job or continue their health insurance while they're out on leave. For many of the workers who call our helpline, this lack of job protection is a complete barrier to getting the medical treatment they need. They simply forego it. New York's paid family leave guarantees job protection, and TDI must as well. These elements must be concluded, included. My written testimony highlights other essential elements of Senator Ramos's bill, which I urge you to include in particular. Intermittent leave under TDI, so that those who need periodic treatment for things like cancer, those seeking treatment for mental health reasons, seeking treatment for substance use disorder, or long COVID, don't need to take their leave all at once. Allowing self-employed workers to access benefits without a two-year waiting period. Allowing workers to access both TDI and paid family leave while working for four weeks, which is the requirement under TDI. And addressing needs of those who suffer pregnancy loss to still receive benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rupa?
Thank you. Excuse me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Suzanne Rupus. I live in Syracuse, New York. I'm an advanced-practice nurse, and my master's degree is in pediatric nursing. I had a very long and intense career in Pete's ICUs, and I ran homeless shelters. I was a first responder at the World Trade Center. And then in my last job, I was assaulted by a mentally ill adolescent. And PTSD, as the doctor said, is, is, it touches every part of your life. I had dealt with children's deaths. I had been, as I said, at the World Trade Center. But when there is a direct attack on your, on your person, that is what caused PTSD, in addition to some other physical injuries for me. I've certainly experienced the issues that the other injured workers have talked about today. And I wanted to be here today to discuss the latest thing that I'm dealing with. It's never been easy dealing with the state insurance fund or workers' comp. And I would not be anywhere where I am without the legal assistance that I've received. In January of this year, I called my provider for a routine appointment and refills on medications. After several go-arounds, I ended up calling the office and was told that they no longer take workers' comp insurance because the process was too onerous, the, you know, paperwork too complicated. They weren't well reimbursed. They couldn't use the portal effectively, and so on. They were not able to recommend any other source of care. So I live in Onondaga County, and it's a service-rich county. And as a registered nurse, I'm pretty savvy in trying to negotiate the healthcare system. I have made countless applications to different providers in Onondaga County hoping for someone who would take me into their practice and prescribe my meds. That's all I need. I don't take any controlled substances. It's nothing fancy, just, you know, a couple of meds. So I have not been successful, and here we are almost six months later. What I am doing is I am paying for medications out of pocket. I don't feel comfortable putting them through my regular insurance. That feels fraudulent to me because it really is workers' comp problem, issue. And the board did try to help. They sent me lots and lots of lists of providers. However, they are outdated. And any that I could find were not, are not taking new clients on. So here I am, and, you know, I said to Lou, "I've given up." It's not worth the emotional distress that I have to go through begging for someone who takes workers' comp to write me a prescription for Wellbutrin or whatever other kind of medication I take. So here I am, and I don't know what to do. So I appreciate the opportunity to tell my story. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your bravery in sharing your story. I can only imagine how stressful and taxing the ordeal must be for you and all of the other workers. I have a few questions. It reminded me of a fax machine. Weird sound. Mr. Dower, I wanted to ask, since you, you know, you have this wealth of expertise in this area of the law, 30 years practicing workers' compensation law, how, how, what kind of trends have you seen in how long it takes a client to, to get compensation in the cases that you've, that you've worked?
In terms of weekly payments, the board has stressed and that carriers must get payments out right away. I think within 18 days, I believe they testified to, and they have been efforting that on cases which are accepted. But, and there's a huge, you know, however to that in that. One, when is the case indexed? Okay, the board, gee whiz, 20 years ago, probably adopted assembling cases versus indexing cases. And indexing has its own special meaning, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here. And assembly has a different meaning. But generally speaking, the, the payments have been going out generally quicker. Are they the right amount? No, not always. And as far as medical treatment goes, a lot of doctors will not even see a person unless it's an emergency room. But doctors won't see it unless you have a case number. They know who the insurance company is, and they can call and verify with the insurance company that they're going to get paid because getting bills paid by doctors is turned into a nightmare.
I imagine you say it's seldom the right number. I imagine it's usually an insufficient number.
Carriers tend to err on the low side.
What, what would you say then? What type of other benefits do your clients end up having to seek? Are, are there other benefits available to people while they're waiting for their just compensation?
No.
May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I'm Holly Shaneborn. I haven't been doing this quite as long as Lou, but I've been representing injured workers for 20 years, and I'm one of the current co-chairs of the WCA. We heard a little bit about the temporary disability benefits. So in cases that are controverted, that are fully denied by an insurance company, in some instances, a claimant can apply until hopefully their case does get established and covered under the workers' compensation law for temporary disability benefits. But that means while they are out of work, trying to pay their bills, trying to pay their, you know, cover their, what the needs of their families, they get $170 a week, which is just obviously.
That barely covers lunch nowadays in a week.
Correct.
Very good. Ms. McLennan Weir, as someone who is blind, did the workers' compensation board offer the necessary accommodations for the hearing process in your case?
Thank you so much for highlighting that. I received no accommodations for my blindness during my first hearing case. The blindness wasn't really a factor, unfortunately. And at that moment, yes, I'm a disability advocate, but I just really wanted them to cover for my physical and psychological costs. I didn't ask workers' comp for any financial payments for my salary because I was able to get covered, since I worked for the state, and there was a give, a give-back program, meaning state workers would give to an injured worker so that they can stay on the state roll. So that happened. There was a big advocacy in my office, and a lot of the staff gave me their time so that I could stay out and recover. My story is really horrible because I have to tell you that I wasn't ready to go back to, to work. But the state wanted me to come back to work. I was provisional hire, so the state tests came up during this whole traumatic experience. I failed the tests, and I lost my job. Looking at it now, I'm glad I, you know, it was the best thing that ever happened to me because working for the state was really the worst job I ever had. Sorry, sorry, but speaking the truth. But I just always wondered if I didn't get injured, would I still have that state job with the state pension? So my, my story is horrible. And I just say that because I'm really embarrassed by that, but it's the truth of what happened to my injury. It's not, it's everything else, the physical pain every day, the psychological pain, but also the fact that I could have had a state pension is kind of sad.
Thank you for sharing that. I mean, I imagine that, well, for starters, without the proper accommodations at the workers' compensation board, I'm actually wondering whether that's a violation of the ADA and your civil rights.
It is, it is.
As, as a human being.
Right, it is. And remember, in that role, I was an injured worker, and I just, I just needed my treatment. And I did not think about, I knew that I was being taken advantage of, and I knew all the rights of ADA, and I knew the rights of the disability legislation through the New York City. Office of Civil Rights is actually stronger than the ADA, and this was, this happened in New York City. But at that moment, I didn't have the energy to fight.
I, I would imagine, I would imagine that's true. All right, well, Ms. Engelberg, and Louis touched upon this a little bit. I was wondering if you could explain the correlation between workers' compensation and TDI, sorry, and Holly did too.
Yeah, absolutely. So TDI can only be taken for an off-the-job injury. Workers' compensation, it happens if you have an on-the-job injury or something that happens on the job. But temporary disability insurance must be taken if you have any kind of injury or illness that doesn't, is not correlated to your job.
And can you, do you, at A Better Balance, have an idea of why the utilization rate for TDI is so low?
Well, I think part of it is, is that a lot of, I worked in social services for many years before I started this job. I know a lot about what the city and the state has to offer, and I was never familiar with temporary disability insurance. And part of that is, a lot of people don't know about it. And then the other aspect of it is that the benefit is so low that a lot of people don't feel the need to even apply for it because it's $170 a week. So I think it's, it's really twofold. It's both of those things is that it's not a well-used program, and it might not be well-used because the benefits are so low. And also because the worst-case scenario when you're dealing with a medical crisis is to lose your job and your health insurance. I can't imagine a worse time, to lose your job and your health insurance than when you're in the hospital or you need ongoing treatment, which is why you would be taking TDI in the first place.
Now, Ms. Rupa? You testified that you do have insurance, but you don't use it for, to cover your medication as a result of your workplace injury.
That's correct.
Do you mind telling us just how much money you spend on your medication?
It's a little bit, it's not terrible. It's a little bit over $100 a month.
But I imagine still, you know, you're, given your challenges in seeking the proper care providers, that medication is just that much more important. And it has affected your ability to work these past few years?
It has. I have been able to take a few short-term jobs over the past few years. In addition to the physical and psychological injury, my earning power was taken away. And with my education, I would be retiring last year and making probably $150,000 to $160,000 a year. I'm not making anything near that. And the workers' compensation board keeps asking me to settle my claim for $60,000.
For $60,000.
One-time payment.
That's incredible. I, I, I find it hard to believe that in a city such as Syracuse, it's so difficult for someone like you to find the appropriate care that, that your injuries require. I can only imagine what more rural and remote, you know, places in New York State, what those injured workers must experience. But thank you for answering my questions. Senator Martins, do you have any?
I don't. I just wanted to thank everyone for your testimony today. It's very helpful for us to contextualize, you know, so much of what we hear. So much of our own experiences come from where we live, and from our own districts, and understanding that it is a big state. There are a lot of challenges out there, and some of the challenges that happen in different parts of the state are things we need to be familiar with if we're actually going to properly tackle this issue. And we've heard some of them today, so I do appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for being here today.
Thank you.
I just have one quick comment. I have to advocate for mental health. I just want to just highlight, the reason it's really hard to find a clinical provider, a mental health provider, is because the reimbursement rate is so low. And also, the, the laborious paperwork that a clinician needs to complete in order to get reimbursed is, is very arduous. So a lot of clinicians just rather not take the payment. So that shrinks the pool of clinicians that are available throughout the state of New York that will take reimbursement for mental health disorders under workers' compensation. So it's a systemic problem. It doesn't matter if it's, you're in a rural part of Buffalo or if you're in the big New York City area. There's still a lot of clinicians that will not take it because of the low payment. And also, the, just the laborious process of submission. And also, being paid, like my psychologist, Dr. Stutman, was paid all these years, and then all of a sudden, one year in 2023, they just stopped payment, stopped payment altogether. If you're in a private practice, a solo practitioner, you can't survive.
That's make or break.
Yeah. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for highlighting that. Clearly, you know, you've seen how we've been able to advocate for mental health injuries to be much more included and respected and compensated in, in what we hope is the future of the workers' compensation board. So thank you for, for noting that. Thank you all for being here. And last, but certainly not least, we have panel F. We're joined by Charlene Obernauer, the Executive Director of NIKOSH, Barbara Miller, who is an injured worker, Mark Kramer, who's a medical provider, and Peter Lewis, who's a pharmacist from TitanRx. Almost there. All right, Ms. Obernauer, whenever you're ready.
There we go. So first, I want to thank all of the injured workers who testified. I know that for myself sitting in the audience, it was really impactful to just hear about your experiences with the system. And thanks to the Majority Leader, thanks to the Labor Chair, Senator Ramos, and to Senator Martins. And I know that some of the other senators had to leave, but thank you to everyone for listening to us today. So my name is Charlene Obernauer. I'm the Executive Director of the New York Committee for Occupational Safety and Health, NIKOSH. And we're a nonprofit membership organization of workers, unions, community-based organizations, and health and safety professionals. And most of when you see us is that we'll do education and training, but we also do advocacy to improve health and safety conditions in our workplaces. We've been around since 1979. We were actually founded pretty quickly after OSHA was founded, initially to defend the agency and then to really extend and defend workers' rights to a safe and healthy workplace. So we've been focusing on the New York State Workers' Compensation System for decades. And you all know, you know, about the, the founding of the system, so I won't go into all of that. But I want to focus my testimony today on workers accessing the system. So we're actually, we just released a new fact sheet this morning about just barriers to access. And so, a couple of things to say. So fewer than half of reported non-fatal work-related injuries and illnesses resulted in workers' compensation claims with awarded benefits. So for example, in 2022, there were about 193,000 of these non-fatal work-related injuries and illnesses. And this is BLS data, so it comes from the DOL at the federal level. But during the same year, New York State provided workers' compensation benefits to only 83,000 workers. So that's much less than half. And those are recorded injuries and illnesses, but we know that there are many more that are not recorded, right? We've all heard the stories of workers who go to a job site who are injured, and then they get dropped off at a hospital. They're told not to tell the hospital staff that they were injured on the job, and then it's not recorded by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So, you know, you're really seeing a lot of injuries that are occurring in New York State, and people are not filing for workers' compensation benefits. I also would like to mention the underfiling during COVID, which is pretty extreme. Only 4% of workers who contracted work-related COVID filed for workers' compensation benefits in 2020 and 2021, and only 1% were awarded benefits. And that's despite the fact that 85% of the workers who filed a COVID-19 workers' comp claim worked in an essential industry. So they worked in an essential industry, 85% of them did. And again, only 1% were awarded benefits. So the final piece that I want to talk about is how claimants who have access to an attorney or other form of representation are more than twice as likely to receive workers' compensation benefits than those who don't. So over the past several years, New York State has awarded benefits to 35% of all initiated claims and to over 80% of claimants with some form of representation. So representation can improve access to workers' comp benefits by helping injured workers overcome legal, technical, and administrative barriers that sometimes make it really hard for them to file. So I guess, from my perspective, right, there are some concrete ways that we can improve the system. And a lot of them come from, you know, doing some pilot projects, right? So some of the pilot projects that have been successful, one example comes out of Washington State. It's a project called Project Help, and it's a Department of Washington State Labor Council AFL-CIO. It provides educational and one-on-one claims assistance to all interested persons. And the project's goal is to provide sure and certain relief for workers who are injured on the job or their families and dependents. It helps about 1,800 workers per year file claims. And you could think about a similar program in New York State that could really go out there and do the kind of education and outreach that's necessary. I will say one piece is that when we do education and outreach in the community, one, we do a workers' comp conference every year attended by, this is actually on Long Island, and it's attended by more than 100 people every year. And a lot of people don't know a lot about the system, right? We're educating people. We're talking to them about the system. We're talking to them about how to apply. And, um, yeah, folks just don't know about it oftentimes. And that knowledge of the system decreases further when you get to folks who might have limited literacy, who might not speak English as their first language, when we get to the immigrant communities in, in New York City and Long Island and throughout New York State. So I think that, you know, really thinking about how we're doing outreach is key because we only have fewer than half of all reported injuries and illnesses that are, you know, actually getting awarded benefits. What else? I think that nonprofits and unions could access the Hazard Abatement Board funding, which is based on workers' compensation assessments. It has been, has been a way for workers to get education, but currently does not allow outreach on workers' compensation. So if there were more funding in that program and if workers' compensation was an allowable topic of training, that would allow for more nonprofits and unions to actually provide this and really allow for us to get out there. So, you know, one of the key programs in New York State, like, that we would be able to access, it just doesn't allow us to talk about workers' compensation. So I'm getting funded by the DOL. I'm talking to people. Somebody asks a question about workers' compensation. I mean, it's a bit of a dramatization, but I have to say, oh, no, sorry. Our funding doesn't cover workers' compensation. You have to come to the next training, right? So it's, it's a little silly. And then finally, we could develop and fund some kind of navigator program. This has been done in the past, and it has been successful. So the idea is that you would have, union representatives, CBOs, and other community representatives could be, you know, deputized essentially by New York State to help people apply for benefits. And it would be a train-the-trainer program. So, you know, these are all some ideas to think about for the next, next legislative session, not for, for this one, but throughout the budget process. I think that, you know, it's worth considering. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Miller. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I come not as an injured worker, but as an advocate to my husband, Tom Miller. He was a business owner, electrician, who fell from a roof on a job and suffered a severe traumatic brain injury in 2010. He has been in several different facilities, nursing homes, throughout the years. Got limited care due to how the facilities work. In 2020, during COVID, we, as a family, myself and our three kids, decided to bring him home where he would still be able to get cared for properly. And we would be able to advocate and see him with the doors being closed and not being able to go in. So since then, I not only took on the role of advocating caregiving, being a mom and a dad. I left a job of 20, almost 25 years as a claims adjuster with great benefits to stay home because I was given the opportunity to go to, back to work after a year, but I had no help yet in the house. I've been dealing with workers' comp since then. We had a case manager all the years that he was in a nursing facility. But when he came home, she had retired, and she was not replaced. So basically, I dealt with an adjuster. An adjuster who made decisions on his medical bases, like, could say yea or nay if he was to get a treatment or not. My husband has not spoken since his injury. He has suffered a head injury, so that is from head to toe. Many organs had shut down, but have since recovered since then. He is not able to use his hands, his legs, so he's bedridden. He does get out for therapy now, but it has been, he has a feeding tube. There was many doctors that we had to go see after we got him home and were able to go navigate through the process, none of which are covered with workers' comp because they are out of network. From GI, from vision, he has prism glasses. He had his eye stitched because of the brain swelling at the beginning. Digestive nutritionist because he has a G-tube. Neurology, we have one neurologist in the area. I was even told by our, the insurance company, to go hours away. So I'm going to take this man, who's 200 pounds, and travel hours away to get a consult for something that he could get done here. Out of network, of course, because there are none. You can, you can find an orthopedic, but you can't find, you know, a GI urologist, vascular. I mean, he's had every specialty, endocrinologist, that, you know, we have sought out, and the bills are piling up. So with that, also, we were told that we could care for him over the last couple of years. He was getting massage. He was getting rehab, PTOC, some of which this adjuster has now cut off. Massage therapy, cranial therapy, that was working for his pain and muscles. We could not put our fingers through his arm when he came home. Now we can bring his arms, because we've been working with him every day. We can bring his arms over his head. He can move his legs now. But it is a challenge. After hearing testimonies and everything up here, I have to say, I listened to the workers' comp board, and all I kept on hearing was, "We are efficient, quick." No, they're not. There's no providers in the network. I spent a whole day calling, and the one lady that testified, she is, she's correct. I was not able to find, either they're retired, they don't receive, you know, they don't deal with workers' comp anymore. They don't want anything to do with it. There are none. You can, like I said, in orthopedic, we have one neurologist, and I have to go to her. And I may not like what she has to say, but she's the only one available. His teeth suffered. They won't pay for dental. I've tried going through, like, Center for the Disability and such like that. You have to call every three months to try and get him on a list, and they're always booked. There's never a chance. So imagine any of us not going to a dentist in 12 years. What you're going to have, tartar, pain in your mouth. Now, I found a dentist, but they won't cover the dentist. But I still go because he needs it. They tell me, here's, here's the list. I spent a whole day calling to see if there was any providers. My, our three kids and I, we've been doing a lot of the care the first year, and now I have some hired help. They, we settled on a wage that they would pay the hired help. In just in August, they, we settled on, with the judge, that they were to pay the family now. We have yet to be reimbursed, not for providers, not for the family, not even for our hired help since August, with the exception of two checks just recently that came. So like I said, we're using our savings. I'm not working. I'm home with, with Tom because I have help for four to five hours a day, okay? I wanted to also just touch base with the fact that we leave the, you know, these, these insurance companies get to run, run everything, it seems like. They get to say, if my husband can have a treatment, he's had primary diagnosis of severe traumatic brain injury. But along with that comes many secondary and tertiary diagnoses because they don't treat the primary diagnosis. Or, you know, you call them, and because they say, no, your doctor's not in network, you have to go to the ER. Those are thousands of dollars of bills. Wouldn't you rather me go to a doctor, even if it's out of network, than to go to an ER every time that there's a problem? It, it's really difficult. My, my husband has suffered. My family has suffered. It's a lot of stress. It's a lot of anxiety. He doesn't get the care that he should get. He didn't even need workers' comp when he was a business owner. He had less than five employees back in 2010, and he still had insurance. And my question for, you know, these insurance companies is, so the penalties are very severe for, if you don't have workers' comp, right? Well, what if you have workers' comp insurance? Where are the penalties for these insurance companies? Where their CEOs get paid $2 million a year, and these adjusters get to say, if my husband can get a treatment or not, see a doctor, get physical therapy, get speech therapy, get massage therapy, all these things to help him? Would you want to be laid in a bed, watching your three kids grow up? Not being able to hug them? It's not, it's not right yet. It's, I'm listening to this lady, and I'm like, it broke my heart to, my husband hasn't told me how he feels. And to see, to hear her, it's like, wow. It's heart-wrenching because I'm sure he goes through the same thing and can't tell me. So what do I do? You know, I, I've tried to deal with the adjuster. I'm not allowed to talk to her anymore. And this is with an attorney. I still have a problem. My appeal for the providers have been with workers' comp boards since September. September, just to get the providers paid. I haven't even been paid for care or the people that I paid to come in and help me since August. And they can't even hear that until the provider appeal is heard. So in the, and now it's been months. So we take our savings, and we pay for the help, and we pay for the doctors because he needs the care. The, the, the regulation, Senator Martins, I really like what you had to say, you know? I mean, a lot of what everybody had to say, but do we need a workers' comp board? Like, what are they doing? In my opinion, it's like, I've been on the phone with them, trying to get answers, trying to get my husband care, trying to get, he's had, like, seizure episodes, to get this medication in case of emergency instead of going to the ER. But even with this emergency med, it's like, you don't get the proper care, medical care, and then these things come up, and you have to go to the ER anyway. The bills that they have just from ER visits are astronomical. And I heard the other, this one lady say that they've offered her, you know, settlements. I have been offered settlements, and I've denied them because my husband's medical care is more important than any dollar amount that they can offer me. I just want him to get the best care, just as I would want for myself. And me and my family have taken on this. And I'm thankful, and I'm glad that we're here and we're doing it together. But the system isn't working. It's very broken. And I think the best people to, well, one of the best people, we have a lot of great people in the room, is the injured workers. They're here. They're telling you what the problems are. And let us be, you know, let us. And let us be, you know, let us all link together to try and come up with a better system that works for the majority because this is not helping anybody. I wanna see health, I, I mean, I'm hearing this lady, I'm sure she wants to be out with her husband, her family, her kids and, you know, it's really hard. So I, I wanna thank you for hearing me and take into account everybody's testimony today and, you know, I know that, I'm sure you have an army, if you need one here, to help um with anything to get regulations changed.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next we have Mr. Or dare I say, Dr. Kramer?
Yes, that's me. Uh, my hat's off to you, my, uh, which had to say was very sad and your courage is amazing. And what I have to say is relatively trivial compared to that, but I think it's the crux. Uh, I'm a board certified orthopedic surgeon, began my practice in nineteen eighty-one in Mount Vernon, New York. And for the past forty-three years, I've been caring for injured workers. In and around nineteen ninety, I began to provide independent medical examinations for various insurance companies. I continue to provide that service. I have a busy orthopedic practice, so between forty-three years of treating patients and thirty-four years as an independent medical examiner provides me with the insight to speak to you today. And I take both hats seriously. I took the Hippocrite oath and it applies to both, as an IME and as a, and as a treating physician. The system fails to address the patient's needs adequately and promptly. The delay in treatment towards a prompt return to the workplace and secondarily alienates or injures the, the work, uh, the injured worker or patient. The PAR system was established to overcome these delays. Unfortunately, it's not working as intended. A level-one PAR is performed many times by a nurse who is not invested with the authority to allow appropriate treatment. For example, two recent cases, I had a patient with displaced shoulder fracture. A nurse couldn't decide because that's not a routine, what to do. She pushed it up and it took three months until I got authorization, at which time the fracture had united in an improper position. Then I had a patient who I did a meniscus repair, not a menisc, ministromy on, unfortunately failed. I do uh probably one percent of the time, I do meniscus repairs because that's, it's not a frequent procedure. It took me six months to get authorization. The patient could have been back at work a few months before, plus the patient's candidly pissed off. The treating physician is, is discouraged from treating injured workers and is extremely difficult to be paid. The carrier ignores the bills, does not reimburse the physician except, according to accepted fee schedule, denies the claim for erroneous reasons. When a physician uh attempts to get paid by the prescribed methodology and the workers' compensation board provides him or her with an administrative award, many times the carrier even ignores that award. I've, I've looked through my records and I find that have been awarded uh substantial amounts of money and the carrier refused to do that. With the extreme difficulty of getting reimbursed, tertiary medical centers shy away from accepting treatment of workers' compensation individuals. This diminishes the overall standard of care of injured work, injured workers' compensation payment, uh patients. The payment system is opaque. What I mean by that is, there's a, the file, I can't look into the file to see if they've received the bill, received the report. I just testified yesterday. Um, uh, it's all, it's done remotely. I testified at a patient I had provided a scheduled loss of use evaluation. And I said at the conclusion of it, by the way, I never got paid for the report. They said, "Well, we don't have it, the bill." I said, "Well, how could that be?" Because both attorneys on both sides had to see my report in order to examine me. So how is that even possible? How's it possible? Okay, how's it? As, as a result, you know, uh, meant, the other things that happened, um, the treating physician was unable to confirm, which I said, if the, if these service, bills for services rendered or received by the board of the carrier, I mentioned that. Established body parts are not always appropriately established at the time of the accident. That happens all the time. A patient thinks he hurt this, the nomenclature's wrong for whatever reason. As a result, appropriate treatment is delayed. Or what happens is, I treat you for your injured shoulder, it's, and it comes established six or eight or ten months later, but the carrier never goes back and repays me for all those visits up until then. So it's not so, I, as an orthopedic surgeon, I can say, I don't, don't know about the reimbursement for psychological services, I can't speak to that. It's not so much that the, the payment is not enough, it's that you don't get paid. Okay, so for example, I just did a, I, I called a colleague of mine at the Hospital for Special Surgery, the number one hospital in the United States, allegedly for orthopedics. Only twenty-five percent accept workers' comp. I did the same, I have a good friend who works at Columbia, also a top hospital, twenty-five percent roughly accept workers' comp. Now, workers' comp pays like four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents to do a total knee replacement. Medicare, the largest insurer in the United States, pays one thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Why wouldn't every orthopedic surgeon be on the compensation board to get paid three times as much for the same procedure? Why not? It's, why, right? Right, the, the payment modules and authorization for treatment modules needed to be overhauled to provide for rapid, appropriate treatment to return the injured party to the workplace as soon as possible in good health and to reimburse the treating physician fully in accordance with the fee schedule in an unencumbered manner. There are private employers who attempt to get their um employees back to work rapidly. For example, Skanska, I had an arrangement with Skanska, I provided them with direct services. Their employees go back to work and they're in a high, they're, they're a construction company, so there are a lot of injuries, but they have a system whereby they get people back to work. And the, so they're not disgruntled. And they're cared for properly. You're welcome.
Is it Lewis or Levis?
Actually, Levis.
Levis, okay.
Chair Ramos, Senator Martins, thank you so much. Members of the Senate Labor Committees, thank you for giving us the opportunity to testify today. My name is Peter Levis, I'm joined by my partner George Montiris, sitting back there. We've been licensed pharmacists in New York State for thirty years. We are the owners of Titan Pharmacy, a small independent pharmacy in Astoria, Queens. Titan Pharmacy has been registered in New York State since December of two thousand and since its inception for twenty-four years now. Titan Pharmacy is specialized in workers' compensation. For years, our small business has fought to change an amendment that was made to the workers' compensation law that allows insurance companies to dictate which pharmacies injured workers must patronize. In many cases, the insurance companies dispute the need for medications, even formulary medications, leaving patients to pay out of pocket for their medicines until their case has been resolved. We have built our reputation as a workers' compensation pharmacy with our patients and their attorneys and doctors by dispensing medications at our own risk and by shouldering the cost of such medications during those times. Our patients know that they can rely on us if the insurance carrier refuses to pay for medication to which they are rightfully entitled. These disputes can last for months or even years. One of our patients is Darren Moran. Darren has been involved in the comp system for decades and he's essentially the same medications every month. He has had tremendous difficulty receiving his medications on a timely basis. Darren has almost given up on trying to get many of his medications through the workers' compensation system. Over the years, we have worked with countless individuals like Darren. We've been doing our best to help Darren for many years. We are owed money for medications dispensed to Darren to treat his established sites of injury going back to twenty fourteen. We will continue to do our best for him, but the system right now is stacked in favor of the insurance carriers and most especially stacked against injured workers like Darren Moran. We've heard many powerful testimonies today from injured workers like Darren. Uh, one of them was by Brooke D'Angelo and her description of her difficulties obtaining post-op medications is something we deal with every day with multiple patients. It's routine for patients to be seeking a workers' comp pharmacy to fill their post-op meds. We frequently dispense without authorization, which should be automatic as per the regulations that have been put forth by the compensation board. There is a bill that would help tremendously with this issue, S one nine seven four, carried by Chair Ramos. It provides workers' compensation claimants with greater flexibility by allowing them to fill their prescriptions, not only at network pharmacies with whom an employer or insurance carrier has an exclusive relationship with, but when unreasonable difficulties arise for medications that should be authorized, injured workers will also have recourse to have their medications dispensed by pharmacies of their choice. This bill provides injured workers with recourse and access when they need help to treat their injuries. It would also benefit small businesses like ours in New York State. This bill has been passed several times in the New York State Senate and we look forward to continuing our work with you and with the legislature this session to remedy this issue. Thank you and all the injured workers we work with in New York State also thank you for your support.
Thank you all for your testimony. I really don't know where to begin. Well, with the pharmacy bill, we have been able to pass it in the Senate. The massage bill has passed our House but has been vetoed twice uh by Governor Hochul, understanding that we want all, every tool to be at an injured worker and their family's disposal. There should be no excuse as to why a worker in New York State cannot access the medical treatment and care that they, that they need. Um, Ms. Obrnauer, Nychos does a good job of investigating health and safety measures for the non-union workforce, which is really appreciated because I can only imagine how hard it is to discern, discern data from the BLS, um, you know, and accepting that it's not necessarily accurate or, or inclusive of, of all of the, of all of the different cases that we see. Do you see a lot of proactive measures from the board to reach out to immigrant workers or for know your rights trainings?
I think it's just on, yeah.
Okay. I think that there have been some trainings um in terms of like virtual trainings and stuff like that, but you really have to get out there and you have to have like a small army to get out there to really do the outreach. Like you need to meet people where they work, you need to meet people, you know, out on eastern Long Island, you know, out in upstate New York, um, you know, out in some like rural communities where you might not expect um to find a ton of workers, but you'll find people who don't know about the system. So I think there has to be just a lot more outreach. That's something that, that we try to do, but it's just impossible given the scope of what needs to be done.
Thank you. Dr. Kramer, I, I've always felt the IME process is, is interesting within and of itself. Oftentimes with medical examinations not taking much longer than four or five minutes um in, 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 in the cases I have seen, um, how do you believe that the workers' compensation board can improve upon the IME process so that injured workers receive that treatment as soon as possible?
I, I don't think they take my report seriously, either side. I mean, I have patient, I have, see individuals who've had four and five operations and I say, "Have any of the operations helped you?" They said, "No," and they want another operation. And I said, "Why?" And he says, "Well, I wanted," they said, "There's something wrong." I said, "Okay." And I suggest that maybe this is not the best course. I once had a, an individual came to me at the age of thirty-two, had had thirty-two operations already. And I said, what I said is, "I, I think there's something else going on here." So of course, his attorney told him to report me to the OPMC. So, but uh, nobody takes the report seriously. There are people who...
And the IMEs are only always for physical health?
Yes, I don't know, I can't speak, I, I can't speak to mental health, that, right. But obviously, to me, there's some, I, I don't, I don't have the expertise in that area, but if you're thirty-two years old, you've had thirty-two operations, you want another one, or you've had five operations and none of them have helped, then you want another one, there's something else going on. And the ju, the judge, if the patient wants to have the surgery and the doctor says he needs it, the judge always approves it. And I always think there's, maybe, there has to be some other way to address this issue.
Yeah. Um, Peter, I, I wanna commend you for your advocacy because, I mean, one, one, one could argue that this goes against your business model. You, you are ask, actually asking for competition, you know, for, for workers to be able to go to any pharmacy of their choosing, meaning not necessarily yours. It sounds like you actually care about workers getting better.
Uh, well, thank you for that. I, I, I believe, I believe me too, we've been trying to help workers, injured workers for a long time. And um, it's, it's true, I mean, would nineteen seventy-four, if that were to become law, they could go to any pharmacy when they were having this difficulty so that they could have access while the building's taken care of on the back end. Of course, there's a bit of an expertise to that and I don't know how many pharmacies have that, but, but yeah, but thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, but I'm wondering if you can e, expand a little bit on how allowing the worker to choose their pharmacy actually might impact recovery?
What, okay. Um, I mean, right now, the way it stands is, there's, there's third parties involved through which the medicine has to be authorized. And that's where the delays come in.
Okay.
Okay, like for example, with the post-op, which I never really understand why the post-op medicines aren't automatically authorized. There's, there's no surgeon that's conducting a surgery that hasn't had authorization from the compensation board. So obviously, the medication should be waiting, quivering to be authorized at the same time.
Soon as you wake up.
But um, so i, if they had the access, what happens is, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved, things fall through the cracks. A lot of third parties need the adjusters to authorize directly. A lot of times, the adjusters are not available. It can be something as simple as they're on vacation, they're on maternity leave, they're away for a few days. Uh, it really doesn't make sense, a lot of times with psychological medications, that people have been on same medications for months, time after time, just all of a sudden for a period of four or five months, it's not authorized. And during, during that period, we step in, we dispense the medications. At some point, the insurance carrier agrees to authorize the medications again, then they start paying for them, then we have to try and get paid for the ones we dispense, which we sometimes do and sometimes don't. So, yeah, i, if...
How does that, that must affect your bottom line?
Yes, yes, it does.
George is nodding profusely.
Twenty years, you know what twenty years is? Twenty years is the day someone came in and got medication and we got paid twenty years later. That...
By workers' compensation.
Yes, by our office, I would claim on our wall. That is a record. We, we took care of a patient in two thousand and one, we were paying in twenty twenty-one. We kept trying all that time, though, so...
I, I admire your perseverance and I apologize on behalf of the state of New York.
There's no need to apologize. Um, so if injured workers had access to, and, so look, yeah, I, I get that you wanna control access to a certain degree and, and have patients, injured workers use your pharmacy networks, but if they're not working, if they're not available, the injured worker has to have avail, availability to any pharmacy that they wanna choose. Before I heard it was being discussed how contested cases, controversial cases are routine, especially for unestablished sites of injury, like, it's very, very common when it comes to psychology, um, they're, they're not established. Because you'll have the initial injury, whatever it might be, a foot or a back, and the awesome PTSD, they're always gonna fight that, they're never gonna allow that to go forward without a fight. And, and those patients never have access to the network. And then we'll dispense medications, waiting for the actual case to be established, the case will be established and then the insurance carrier will turn around to us and say, "Well, you know, they should have used the network. They didn't use the network, which is why we're not gonna pay you, even though the network wasn't functioning." So, yeah, thi, this, this would greatly increase access to patients. And again, we're not talking about any medications, we're talking about medications that are covered under the formulary, they're described by the workers' comp board, there's a fee schedule, there's medical treatment guidelines that go along with them. So it's not just like random medications that are gonna get thrown out the door that are getting paid for. They're still gonna have to adhere to the quality of care and the standard of care that's been described by the workers' compensation board, so...
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Can I add something?
Yes, you can add something, sure.
Um, I'm just listening. I, also, um, he, he's correct in saying, um, you know, they don't see every, like in your ca, your cases, the prescriptions that they've been using, all of a sudden they just cut you off. Because what happens with, you know, for us with my husband's care, massage, they were paying for it, they, it was, it went through, we had problems getting it through the portal, I'm still fighting to get reimbursement, then she was paying for it for two whole years. And then all of a sudden, done. Like, it's helping and every therapist, even our physiatrist, had to write a letter because now they're like, "Okay, if you have no in-network provider, I want every doctor he sees to write a statement saying why he has to go." I've gone to these doctors and they're like... I've gone to these doctors, and they're like, "What?" First of all, he's going to a GI doctor because he has a feeding tube. He needs a nutritionist, because I'm not one, you know? And right on the spot, these doctors are giving me letters. Our physiatrist said, "You know, with a TBI, you can have injuries," I mean, he sustained organ issues, "but from head to toe, that means inside, outside, neurological, from head to toe." And the insurance company does not reflect this. They look at the head because of a brain injury, and that is it. They don't take into consideration even records dating back. I don't know how long this adjuster, she's new to us since we've been home, but I don't know where she, where the knowledge comes in as an adjuster, I being one myself. I had a contract I had to follow with workers' comp, every body is different, right, every injury. So, I don't know how she's making determinations on my husband's behalf when you don't, do you know him since 2010? Do you know the injuries that he's sustained, and why we have all of these things that we're trying to overcome now? Because primary turns into secondary things, and then tertiary, if they're not taken care of, and he's right, they just cut you off, and then you're like, you're like, backtracking, you're starting from scratch again with therapies and with medications and payments, and it's like this ongoing vicious circle.
I can't tell you, I can't tell you how many times I see insurance companies up here in Albany lobbying, you know, for us to legislate against fraud. And the problem with that, from my perspective, is that when you operate from that point of view, then you're operating in order to prevent people from actually getting the services that they need, when we know that fraud is actually not as pervasive as actual genuine worker injuries. And that applies in this instance, that applies to the scaffold law, that applies in so many different aspects of our work here. But I do want to say, Ms. Miller, that he is very lucky to have you. You're an incredible woman and an incredible advocate for your husband. I cannot imagine how much work you and your children have put into his well-being, and I just want you to know that you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
And I admire you tremendously for everything that you do.
You know, I'm, coming here, yes, we can, you know, my stomach was turning this morning coming here, but doing nothing, coming and not being present, and, you know, speaking about what you're going through isn't going to help the situation, and it's not going to help the next person. So, I commend everybody. I, I just, it's a lot to take on, you know? And it's not just the injured worker, because the family, the families are going through it too, and it's a lot, and they make it worse, because really, workers' comp, their mission statement, I keep going back to that, I'm like, they don't really uphold that. And, you know, it's supposed to help let the injured worker heal, right? They make things so difficult that it's painful for the advocates, the family, the injured worker, to be able to heal, because you're fighting them all the time. And I think that, and I've invited the insurance company, the adjuster, you know, "If you think that I'm out of line, please come to our house. You know where we live, you're invited anytime, open to our policy." Like, I think you should.
Can I ask you, as a former claims adjuster, for...
Who are adjusters?
No, no, you.
Oh.
Right? Isn't that super court that you did?
I was, yes. Yes, for health insurance.
I'm just curious if you can speak to the type of training or the guidance that adjusters are given at insurance companies, only because I suspect I'll never be able to get an actual claims adjuster in front of me on a panel like this. So, I'm just wondering, you know, now that you're, you know, with this experience, how you reflect back on how you were prepared and trained for the job when you had it?
So, for me, I was, at first, I was a claims approver, and then I went to adjuster, and when you have your private insurance, you do have contracts. I worked for Emblem Health, which is a large downstate, but you had contracts to follow. So, if you had a diagnosis, I wouldn't take it into my own hands if they didn't have information. There's other departments that you take that information, you send it to. If there, if it's not clear in your contract, then you would send it. If somebody's asking for a PET scan, for instance, they have a diagnosis for, you know, cancer, and they've met their three PET scans, I'm not making that determination to deny it. I'm going to send it to let somebody with more knowledge than I to reach out to the provider.
A doctor?
Correct. That's why with my husband and how this adjuster is able to say yes or no to treatments, to therapy...
That's malpractice.
To, exactly. And to say yes or no for us to be reimbursed. And then she'll say comments like, "You know I have thirty days." Well, it's been since August. I think that's been, like, where's the penalties? And then when I talk about, you know, like, penalties and interest, like, you have to, like, hit these insurance companies where it hurts, and that's the dollar. You know, when your CEOs are making $2 million a year, and my husband can't get a massage that helps his muscles, or go see a doctor out of network because you have no in-network doctors, that's a problem. When people can't get their prescriptions, that's a problem. When you're buying yachts and whatever you're doing with your $2 million, I am not looking for you to pay me your checks to get off your back. I want my husband properly cared for. He had insurance for a reason, and he needs to get the care that he should get, just like any other injured worker should get. And that's why, what brought me here today, is like, I couldn't wait to get here, you know? I just, like, I'm passionate about it, and I know there's a reason for all of this. This is just the beginning of, I really do believe some good change will come out of it. So, I thank you for hearing us, and we have a lot of people here that care a lot about doing the right thing, and I think that's what we all want, to do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Senator Martins, do you have any questions for the panel?
A couple, and kind of dovetails off of your last few questions. Dr. Kramer?
Yes, sir.
So, when you're submitting a claim, I'm assuming that you're talking to a doctor on the other side who is evaluating your claim, right?
Well, no, we, no, it's all done electronically now.
And the person who's evaluating it on the other side, this claims examiner?
As I said, it's, oh, a claim. No, it's a claims adjuster who looks at it. I, we don't speak to anyone.
And is the claims adjuster, who I am assuming, because I agree, is not a physician, is not a healthcare provider, is not somebody who has a background in healthcare, is making a decision based on your ability to provide services and needed care that you've determined is necessary to improve the well-being of the person you are treating, and yet that person has the ability to tell you no, correct? And so, look, I am, I understand we have a system that is susceptible to fraud. There are people out there who are going to try, let me just finish, they're going to try and play the system, but that shouldn't be the default, and I agree. And I think all too often, what I'm hearing is that the system defaults to treating everyone as if they're trying to actually play the system, as opposed to getting them the care that they need. And that requires a holistic approach to how we are dealing with this issue to begin with. If we start with the premise, and I think we all agree, that an injured worker needs to be given the ability to return to work or return to health to hopefully return to work, and if that is the priority, and that has to be the priority, then all of these intermediate steps that prevent people from getting care, that require people to wait months where their, you know, their fractures have already set improperly because they're waiting for care, that allows for people to go to an operation without having the necessary medicine awaiting them when they come out on a Friday, so that they have to go without medications over a weekend, there is a systemic loss. And, look, these are examples, but I think these examples are systemic and that they are reflective of a much larger problem, and so I certainly appreciate the opportunity we've had today to listen to your testimony. And, Ms. Miller, I agree with my colleague. Kudos to you, and God bless you and your family. To everyone else, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. This concludes our first-ever Senate Labor Committee hearing on the Workers' Compensation Board and NISIF. We're hoping for this to become a tradition until we get it right. I just want to thank you all for participating, for testifying, for being in the audience, to my colleagues, especially Senator Martins, who endured the whole hearing with me, and of course, to my team and the Senate Central staff. Thank you all for making today possible, and, well, hopefully, in the last thirteen, is it thirteen days remaining of session, perhaps we can get some of these bills passed and signed into law. Thank you.
Same time next month?
Yes.